Wow, this AP stuff she did.
All right, I hereby call the 2,290th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united abroad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so our first item will be the Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award for April 2019 presented to Gabriella Rhodas. Come on up.
This is amazing Gabriella, good evening everybody. I'm gonna read some other things off of my phone, but I do want to say that I'm very excited to bring Gabriella forward. She has an event this evening after this, so she'll be leaving quickly, but she's just a phenomenal student and a young lady that's just full of class and she's brilliant, she challenges herself academically, she's kind, she's... Out of all the students I brought forward this year, Gabriella's the one that I received the most comments from, from our staff about what a wonderful young woman she is, and she's involved in a lot of different things. She's definitely, you read some of her accolades, but her plans are to go to George Fox and she could talk a little bit more about that. And I did write in there and I just think it's worthy of talking about it again, but that she's actually played in the band at George Fox this last year, so that's been a really good experience for her. She worked in the Leda Library here for six years, starting out as a seventh grader, and the only reason she left is because she got another job. She also does a lot of volunteering for her church and helps, she's recorded, she's been in one recording of a CD for music for mass and is currently involved in another one that's gonna come out in May. So those are just some of the things that she does on top of just being an amazing human being, and I'm just so proud to bring her forward and thank you for being such a wonderful young person and for just being in my life.
Thank you.
Did you have some comments you wanted to read?
I do have some comments, okay. Left my glasses at home, so I had to borrow some, but I think this is big enough, so. Even as a freshman Gabriella worked hard, she pushed herself to improve and did it with a positive attitude. She didn't let anything intimidate her, she is a model student, a peer, and just person in general. My professional life has been brighter because I've known this young lady. That's from Ms. Stucart. I have had Gabby in chemistry as a sophomore, AP chemistry as a junior, and physics this year. She is part of the National Honor Society as well, heavily involved in jazz ensemble and even plays with the George Fox College with her brother Jacob who is attending there. She will be attending there next year. She is one of my best AP students, is always getting her work done on time, which is really important. She's genuinely interested in learning, a breath of fresh air to say the least. She's always willing to give her time to help others. She's kind, considerate, happy, supportive, and exceptionally high caliber young lady, one of the best that I've ever had the opportunity to work with, and that's Mr. Lindman, who's been at Milwaukee for many, many years, so that just says a lot about who she is and her character. Gabrielle Rhodas is in a class of her own. She is future focused, determined, hardworking, genuinely kind, empathetic, inspiring, and so-so giving. She does deserve the world and so much more because she is how much, because that is how much she has given and will continue to give. She has the ability to run the world and I want her to be, and I want to be on her team. And that's from Ms. Ashley. So there's just a couple and I have more, but that, people just, when I put her name out there, because I do that every time I nominate a student and get feedback from staff, and right away I just got tons and tons of emails about Gabby.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about your plans going forward? We know where you're going to school, what do you think you're gonna study?
I'm going, I don't know if this is on?
It is.
Okay. I'm studying music performance for vocal and I'm also either minoring or majoring in Spanish as well, so I can go to interpreting. Those are the plans for now, yeah.
And the, it says you're in the wind ensemble and then she said jazz, but it doesn't actually tell us what instrument you play.
No.
In the wind ensemble, I play the clarinet. I've been playing the clarinet since the sixth grade and I self-taught myself how to play the trumpet in the seventh grade and I've been playing it since and I'm in the Jasmine and I play trumpet, yeah.
Wow.
No kidding? You play brass and wind?
Mm-hmm.
That's unusual.
Yeah, I'm also in the choir as well.
She just sang the national anthem at our last event, so she has a beautiful voice.
Thank you.
Nice. So, anybody, who wants to start?
I'll start.
Cool.
As always, we are so impressed with the students at Milwaukee High School that your principal is able to bring to us so that we can, you know, do some extra celebration of those folks. But to see a young lady sitting in front of us who is as poised and as competent and as all together as you are, who has taken six AP courses over the last two years, plus all of the musical, plus, you know, it's kind of the choir in there too, I mean, that's really amazing and you certainly have every right to be proud of you. I know your family must be immensely proud of you and we're so pleased that your principal brought you forward to us this week so that we could, you know, help celebrate the great student that you are and what you will contribute to the world as you move forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering where your love of music comes from?
I'm trying to think, when me and my brother were younger, we would learn English through watching movies and stuff like that, because my dad was either always at work, because he was in the military around when me and my brother were younger, and my mom doesn't know any English, so that was how Jacob, my brother and I, we started learning English and like communicated in that form, and so we would always watch a bunch of Disney movies and I guess, I don't know, something like clicked and like we started loving music a lot, and I started music in the choir church. And I've been at Ascension Catholic Church for about 10 years now and I've been in their choir, like I started in the first generation of children's choir and I'm in the folk choir and the youth choir and so, yeah, it's kind of where that started and, I don't know, it's just something that's always been there, so I thought, why not study in it and see what I can do with it?
My husband's has two half-brothers who are identical twins and they have some of that, I think they've worked a lot at music, but they also have that innate gift that I think you probably also have, because you just pick up instruments and sort of absorb how it works somehow, and it's taken them really interesting places in their lives. They've worked on cruise ships, they've done tours with musical theater, so, you know, it's just a really fun thing and it's one of those talents that gives you doorways into people's hearts in an interesting way, but it's also that really technical skill that lends itself to developing, obviously you have some scientific skills given the AP load that you've got, and the interest in translation I think will also fit with that really nicely, so, so it's just really cool. And I went to Linfield, so I, I'm glad you'll be in the Willamette Valley, it's a good place, good place to go to college, so, it's lovely to see you and lovely to meet you and wish you the best.
Thank you for meeting you as well.
Yeah, I think it's amazing how rounded you are with the music, the Spanish, the hard science. I would say that I tried to even blow in a trumpet and I couldn't do it, so, so that you picked one up and taught yourself is just astounding to me. The other, the other thing I noticed is I think it's very lovely that you want to go to the same college as your brother. I will say that I'm the oldest and my brother would not have come, not even given a moment's consideration to having gone to the college I went to. He would have gone as far the other direction, so it's nice that you and your brother have that kind of connection with your music and with the college. I just wish you all the best and hopefully maybe you'll come back to Milwaukee when you're finished, so.
Thank you.
Funny, all three of us kids went to the same college because that's what we could afford, so, it's very sweet that you're choosing to go. I see two people behind you who are very, very proud and I, I wonder if, are they your parents?
Yeah.
Okay, I just hope that you'll translate for her how very proud your community is of you and, and I hope, I hope Principal Gellman has shared with you all of the amazing comments and, and I'm sure you'll have some homework to do to translate all of that for your mother, because I think it's, it's, what an incredible honor and for us as well to be able to meet you, and it's just really great that we get this opportunity every month. It's, I think, our favorite meeting of every month and it's just such a pleasure to meet such a, such a wonderful young lady and, and I congratulate you on this and really wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's extraordinary when somebody has multiple talents and does them all well, to sort of be able to do the math and the science and the AP classes and then be, play a wind instrument and then pick up a brass instrument, which is like completely different ways of using your mouth and all of that, I can't even imagine, and you do vocals. My son played a bass clarinet and then was also a singer. He was in Portland Youth Choir here and up in, and that was a huge thing for him, it really was formative for his life and the direction he headed. So stick with it, I think it's, as Kathy was saying, that it opens all kinds of doors and creates lots of opportunity. I really look forward to see what you do with it and where you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somewhere here I have a thing to read. "The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School, Gabriella Rhodas. That has been known to all on the 16th day of April 2019, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee and municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas and in the State of Oregon, recognize this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation."
Think I'm out of it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. Next up, the sad event of the evening. Go from the really happy one to the really sad.
It's a happy thing.
Maybe for you.
For you.
Real happy, actually.
Not happy for the fish.
Did you notice the change in his name, Carmen?
Yeah.
That'd take long, doesn't it?
Used to be somebody.
The once was, the once was.
Oh, God.
You can take that copy home.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't even know where to start and every time I've tried this in the last however long we've been, it, I get emotional and then I can't do, I get tongue tied. You have been not only a great partner in, in keeping a city together, but a mentor to me and, and obviously a great mentor to a phenomenal police department. I think the events of Saturday night really illustrated how good your department is. There would have been a very different outcome, I fear, in a lot of, in a lot of cities and I think it's very much due to your leadership. I'm really glad that the new police chief came up under you. It gives me worlds of confidence and, and we will miss you a lot and I feel sorry for the fish.
They're probably safer than you think.
Still not fun to get caught.
No, especially the way I catch them.
I've just been very blessed to have served here over the last thirty-some-odd years. It, it seems like just yesterday that I came here as a sixteen-year-old cadet, young and dumb and not knowing what I was getting into, but instantly falling in love with the job and, and it's been, it's been an awesome ride. I am so very proud of the men and women that work for us and especially when you look at this weekend, how everybody just did their job and did it flawlessly and, and responded appropriately and, and took care of their injured buddy and it was even, it was just awesome to see him hobble it on crutches yesterday to the retirement party. I did my heart very much well to see him up and about already even, it was good for him to come and it was good for everybody else to see him, and so we were very, very happy about that. Very proud of Luke, love that guy, known him for a long time, we've worked closely together and I'm convinced that he is the right guy for you guys and he will continue to run the department and work with you and Anne and the rest of the team and, and the community to, to provide an excellent service that you guys are accustomed to, so, we're very, very happy.
Anybody else want to say anything or I've got a resolution to read?
I think you should just read it, we said what we had, what we were, we said, we said stuff in the last meeting, I don't think I can do it again.
I was gonna say.
I cry.
I thought I was gonna be able to sneak out of here last time.
Yeah, we were all crying last time, so I won't go back down that road, but I do think we should mention what Representative Power is.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I won't, I won't get it right.
It's a joint resolution of the House and Senate and it's being sponsored by Representative Karen Power and Senator Taylor, and it is to thank Steve for his exceptional service to the city of Milwaukee.
Be read on the floor of the legislature.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll let you know, I've asked Representative Power to keep us posted on a date so that all of us can go down for that, for that as well.
Another opportunity to cry. All right, well, I will read this resolution. "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, expressing appreciation for years of service to the community by Chief Steve Bartol and recognizing him on his retirement. Whereas following a distinguished career with the Milwaukee Police Department that began in the Milwaukee Police Department Cadets Program, and whereas Chief Bartol began his career with the Milwaukee Police Department in 1991, and whereas Chief Bartol served as a patrol officer from 1991 to 1994, a general assignments detective, and a special investigations unit detective from 1994 to 1998, a patrol sergeant and a detective sergeant from 1998 to 2008, captain from 2008 to 2014, and chief from 2014 to 2019. And whereas Chief Bartol completed the Southern Police Institute Administrative Course in 2007 and the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy in 2009, and whereas Chief Bartol was appointed Milwaukee Police Department Chief in 2014, following service as interim chief from 2013 to 2014, and whereas Chief Bartol's career with the Milwaukee Police Department is an example of the best that law enforcement professionals can provide when serving a community and its citizens. And whereas Chief Bartol is retiring from the Milwaukee Police Department on April 15th, 2019, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, that council on behalf of the people of Milwaukee wishes to express sincere appreciation and thanks to Chief Steve Bartol for his dedication and service to our community."
Yes. Thank you.
And may I get a quick photo of that as well?
Bring in a photo.
What are we doing, a photo?
I'm doing, I'd like to, is that okay?
All of us?
Yep.
All right, let's do this.
Oh, shut that up.
It's screensaver.
She was saying that to us.
Yep. There we go. We might need to close that blind, Steve, can you reach it? It's gonna, like twist it. That's why I told Steve to do it. I knew I couldn't reach that.
Yeah, let's, let's take the camera.
I'm good.
All right, everyone say Milwaukee.
Milwaukee.
Are we supposed to sign this quickly before? And do we need to sign it before we go? You'll get it, okay, okay.
We're still making it work, don't worry, he's got more stuff to do.
Mr. Mayor, we still need a motion on that resolution.
So I'll move to approve the resolution expressing appreciation for years of service to the community by Chief Steve Bartol and recognizing him on his retirement.
A second.
Let's all second that one.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution expressing appreciation for years of service to the community by Chief Steve Bartol and recognizing him on his retirement. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Steve.
And actually, Chief, do you mind, sorry, former chief, do you mind hanging out just for a second?
I'm still gonna call him chief.
That's fair. We actually had a couple of other items on the agenda for tonight and there are items that Steve and I have been working on together. I wasn't sure if you guys wanted to speak to those, which was your resolution against hate, that might be the only one. Do we want to go to that next?
All right, yeah, let's skip to that.
He's never leaving, just so you know.
I think I'm gonna wait for a callback.
Totally in.
So we have a resolution, a rejection of hateful acts, and we, there was one published in packet and we tweaked it a little bit, Kathy will make a motion to amend it slightly. Do you want to talk to introduce this, talk to us about this at all?
Sure. I think it's, was... I think it's, uh, was brought forward as a result of some activity that occurred out at Spring Park this last weekend. Uh, unfortunately, some folks, uh, thought it would be kind of cool to, to draw some symbols that, uh, aren't necessarily, uh, consistent with the philosophy of Milwaukians and our ideology of, uh, all people being created equal. It's interesting is, uh, you know, over the years, um, I've met different variety of folks. And, uh, one of the things that makes America great is our, our freedom of speech and freedom of expression. And, um, I have, uh, come across a lot of people as a police officer that I didn't agree with their, their beliefs and their ability, what they wanted to preach and what they wanted to communicate to others. But, um, as part of my job, I'm sworn to uphold the Constitution and, and I firmly believe in that First Amendment and being able to speak your opinion. But what's frustrating is when people pervert that and distort that to the point where they believe they have the right to, uh, persecute others because they don't believe the same way that they do. And that's when, when it becomes criminal and when it becomes persecution for those beliefs, then that's when we get to apply the law that, uh, that they, they claim to, to use on their behalf. And then hold them accountable to the full extent that we can. I'm glad that Milwaukee is the type of community that respects each other and, um, and stands for, uh, those, those rights. And I'm glad that you guys take a stand and, and make known, uh, what Milwaukee truly represents and what it, what we believe in.
Thanks.
And I'll add that the symbols in question have been removed. They were removed within hours of discovery. Counselor Beatty and Mayor Gamba went down and eradicated the symbols. So know that they are no longer there.
And with support from some of our community members who are here tonight.
Yeah, with, Hamed was.
Was the one who found it.
He was the one that found it.
Yep.
Called our attention to it and then helped us remove it. Thank you, Hamed. Do you want to make some motions to?
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to, uh, slightly amend the resolution as it was initially presented. And you'll see in front of you, we have an amendment in two places, at the very beginning and the very end. And the first change would be to change whereas at the beginning to the council recognizes Oregon's history of widespread racism and white supremacy. And, then it goes on and on. And then at the very end, in the, at the, the last sentence of the therefore be it resolved, it is changed to the Milwaukee community stands united against hate, hate speech and hate crimes.
All right. They are second on the.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to amend a resolution, um, changing the first sentence to read, the council recognizes Oregon's history of widespread racism and white supremacy. And for the very last sentence to read, the Milwaukee community stands united against hate speech and hate crimes. All in favor of the changes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? All right, so now, uh, we can get a motion for the resolution as amended.
Well, I, okay. I move to approve the resolution rejecting hateful acts in our community. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution rejecting hateful acts in our community as amended. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to add a comment that, um, one of the, there were multiple pieces of graffiti. And one of them said, praise the Lord. And to me, that just, that was sort of so, uh, such a mis, such a perversion of what Christianity is about. So, I mean, I think whoever thinks that that's what Christianity is about is, is, is wrong. And so, I think, um.
Well, I won't claim to get it 100% right, but, uh, there's a, a portion in the Bible where the Pharisees are challenging, uh, Jesus and they're asking him about the law. And they asked about one of, one of the greatest laws were. And he said, to love the Lord your God with all your heart and soul and mind. And the second of these is to love your neighbor like yourself. So, yes, that would be a perversion of that.
Scott, could you pull up the visual? There's, there should be a, there should be a little magic slide.
So while we are pulling up the slide, I also wanted to add, um, I really appreciate how quickly the community came together around this issue. In the future, if you need help, if you need us to come take care of it as a city, it is something that we stand for as well. We will always protect the rights of our community members. I encourage you to dial these numbers that are now going to be up on the screen. You can also reach us through the main line if there's a question about getting individuals out to clean something up quickly. We're happy to come out and do so quickly.
And I just want to encourage people to really do this. Don't be vigilante law. If someone's doing something, don't place yourself in a position where your, your own safety is threatened. We take that very seriously.
All right. Did we vote on the resolution?
No.
Nope.
That was the discussion.
Is there any further discussion? No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. So I'm gonna read the resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, rejecting hateful acts in our community. Whereas the council recognizes, recognizes Oregon's history of widespread racism and his, uh, and white supremacy. And whereas this state witnessed a 40% increase in hate crimes as reported by the Federal Bureau of Investigation in 2018 alone. And whereas it is incumbent upon our community to clearly reject any and all attempts to diminish the rights or threaten the personal safety of this community. And whereas the council has in the past affirmed Milwaukee as a place of inclusion and acceptance in Resolution 115-2016. And whereas we continue to reject any and all attempts to make residents and visitors feel unsafe or unwelcome in our community. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, that the City of Milwaukee remains committed to welcoming, serving and protecting residents and visitors without regard to race, origin, religion, income, gender, sexual orientation or immigration status. The Milwaukee community stands united against hate speech and hate crimes. Thanks, Chief.
There you go. Have a good night.
You too. All right. So, back on schedule. We will have our Earth Day proclamation, uh, which will be introduced by our Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator, Natalie Rogers.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. So my name is Natalie and I'm the Climate Action Sustainability Coordinator for the city. I'm here to share with you a little bit of information about Earth Day, which is April 22nd. And it's coming up pretty soon. And I just wanted to share a little bit of the history of Earth Day with you and then how it impacts the city and our goals today. So I'm gonna start by reading you a little bit of information about Earth Day. I got it from, um, earthday.org, which devotes itself to educating people about the purpose of Earth Day and show you how it aligns with our goals today. So the idea for a natural, national day to focus on the environment came to Earth Day founder Gaylord Nelson, then a U.S. Senator from Wisconsin after witnessing the 1969 massive oil spill in Santa Barbara, California. Inspired by the student anti-war movement, he realized that if he could infuse that energy with emerging public consciousness about air and water pollution, it would force environmental protection into the national political agenda. Senator Nelson worked with Republican Congressman Peter McCloskey and Dennis Hayes from Harvard University to announce the idea for a national teach-in on the environment to national media. On April 22nd, 1970, 20 million Americans took to the streets, parks and auditoriums to demonstrate for a healthy, sustainable environment in massive coast-to-coast rallies. Groups that had been fighting against oil spills, polluting factories and power plants, raw sewage, toxic dumps, pesticides, freeways, loss of wilderness and the extinction of wildlife suddenly realized that they shared common values. Earth Day 1970 achieved a rare political alignment, enlisting support from Republicans and Democrats, rich and poor, urbanites and farmers, business owners and labor leaders. By the end of that year, the first Earth Day had led to the creation of the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Clean Air, Clean Water and Endangered Species Acts. It was a gamble, Gaylord recalled, but it worked. So I'm proud and thankful to be with you all today to celebrate Earth Day 2019, April 22nd, within the Milwaukee community. While this is a joyful day where we should appreciate and promote the national world around us, we also need to remember the purpose and call to action that Earth Day was founded upon. We will need to draw upon the knowledge and lessons of the past to address the environmental problems of the present time and the future, including the largest threat of all, climate change. But through our city-led actions, such as our Climate Action Plan and the community-led activism and drive, we can continue to spread the original message of Earth Day, preservation of our natural resources and celebration of the beautiful planet we call home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion. Or do we have, we don't have a motion?
Just a proclamation.
It's a proclamation.
Just a proclamation. All right. In that case, I'll read it. Whereas the people of this city, the Dogwood City of the West, are proud to reside amid the natural beauty of the Pacific Northwest and the state of Oregon and all the trees, plants, waterways and wildlife encompassed in this region that give character and life to the, to the landscape. And whereas the first Earth Day was proclaimed on April 22nd, 1970, and its annual observance has encouraged the conservation, protection and appreciation of our planet's ecosystem and natural resources. And whereas the Milwaukee community has embraced carbon and sustainability goals in the face of climate change, the most pressing threat for our planet. And whereas the City of Milwaukee has formally adopted a climate action plan that includes strategies and actions for our city to conserve our natural resources, encourage sustainable neighborhoods and behaviors and promote resiliency. And whereas education, partnerships and community actions for restoring and protecting our ecosystems, climate and planet are promoted and honored by all of Milwaukee residents. And whereas the City of Milwaukee proudly recognizes all who protect and preserve the environment and climate through participation in Earth Day activities and by taking a proactive role in the protection of our community's precious natural resources. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, the mayor of the City of Milwaukee and municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2019 to be Earth Day in the City of Milwaukee. Thank you.
Thanks, Nisley.
All right, tie up to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the March, uh, the minutes of the March 5th, 2019 regular session, the March 12th, 2019 study session and the March 19th, uh, 2019 work session. We have a resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing a personal, uh, services agreement with Marina and Company LLP for professional audit services. A resolution authorizing a professional services contract with Water Systems Consulting, Inc. in the amount of $365,068 to provide professional services related to the development of a wastewater system master plan. And we have a resolution acting as the local contract review board approving a contract for the construction of the Southeast 22nd Avenue and Southeast River Road Safe Project, CIP number 2019-T40 to AKS Engineering and Forestry LLC. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove the March 5th, um, minutes. I have a little tweak.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
What number is that on that?
I'm gonna make the motion for the rest of it.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus the, uh, minutes of the March 5th, 2019 regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus the March 5th regular session minutes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Do you want to have it come back to another meeting after you've had a chance to?
It's super quick.
Okay.
Uh, in the discussion of the Volunteer of the Year Award selection as it's presented in the minutes, it's just the addition of the fact that we on the dais very much wanted to encourage people who had submitted names that were not selected as Volunteer of the Year to, to resubmit those people in future years. Just that it's not a one-time deal. If you're, if you feel like someone is really deserving, you can keep nominating them year after year after year. That was it.
We've made that correction.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion to approve those minutes as corrected?
I would make a motion to approve those minutes as corrected.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the March 5th regular session as corrected. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously.
I just quickly want to point out too that, um, I certainly agree with that. And in our, in my news article that I wrote for, the pilot happened right after that. And so that was the focus of what I, what I, how I wrote my article so that hopefully more folks in the community will nominate people and hopefully folks will realize that they can nominate their same choice the next year if they're still, yeah, so, yeah.
All right. The next item is Audience Participation. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community members' statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out the yellow speaker registration card available on the table in the hall and identify agenda item number four, Audience Participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during the public comment may be new to some counselors, the city manager will, will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, are there any follow-up reports from the April 2nd, 2019 Audience Participation? Ms. Ober?
There are not, but I'd like to take a moment, uh, with council on air to thank the officers who were involved on Saturday night just to make sure that everyone knows that it took a village that night to keep everyone safe. And I deeply appreciate each and every one of them for their time and efforts, every day, but especially then. Sergeant Jeff Rogerson, Sergeant John Foreman, Officer Claire Davis, Officer Brian Johnson, Officer Kenny Simick, Officer Brad Walther and Officer DJ Duke. Thank you so much for your exceptional service.
Indeed. As I said at the swearing in of the new chief, or no, when did I say this? Earlier tonight. It's, uh, in other cities, that might have turned out differently. And, uh, we have an extraordinary police force. And that was the, sort of the epitome. All right. So, I have one card so far. Bernie Stout? Come on up.
All right, thank you. Bernie Stout, 4647 Southeast Data Lane. April 3rd, I went to the Housing Density Meeting, um, at the PSB building. Several things were brought up. They had a slide up of 10244 Southeast 43rd, which is a existing house with proposal for a new house and a couple ADUs. So one of the things I asked about because of this density thing is, will this, because of the setbacks and everything, you've got more plausible fire hazards, will there be, um, fire sprinklers required? And he said, yes. And I didn't quite believe that. So anyway, that prompted me to go, I'm familiar with this, uh, hundred, it's, uh, Glenwood or out in, on, off of Gleason, 157th. So they've got, they've got a, um, food cart. They've got Max Line at the other end. And you have to go up to 162nd to get off and on. And then, this has been, since 1979, this road's been in this condition. In this section here, there's been over ten dump truck loads of gravel put on it. It's been graded at least half a dozen times in those forty years. Then they added, oh, about. Then they added, oh, about 12 years ago, they added Northeast Everett Court. And now they added, on Everett Court, it was just one lane with sidewalks, they added 158 plays. Because on this corner back, they're, they're allowing six-lot subdivision. So on Everett Court, you've got 10 new houses that have been put in since 2008 at different increments. And then on 157th, you've got another 14 houses that have been put in since 1980, some of them fairly recently. But there's the road. And Everett dumps on, this is Everett and 157th, and that lot there has been plagued with garbage and abandoned vehicles and whatever over the past 40 years. So just a quick overview, I haven't been able to show you any of the houses because I don't have enough time. But in 40 years, there's been 24 houses put in, there's a new partition for a flag lot for a new house this year. And they're just going to keep going. No system development charges, no sidewalks. Where do people walk?
So I'm not exactly clear where the border is out there. Is that in Portland or?
Yeah, it's Portland. That's the other part. Portland annexed it in the 80s and said, "We're going to give us more infrastructure." So for 36 years, that's what they got with, with all their taxes they've paid, it's gone into downtown Portland. And this is what everybody's been complaining about. Anyway, that, I'll, I'll send you the, the addresses and everything, and, but I'm, I'm just kind of bringing it up because when you get into this, you need to start explaining system development charges and what a, a local improvement district is, and how, how you pay for it 40 years down the road. So do you want to get rid of that? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Our next item is the Cottage Cluster Feasibility and Accessory Dwelling Unit Joint Session with the Planning Commission. So I'm only seeing one planning commissioner. Two commissioners?
I guess we have to empty out our coats out of our chair.
Yeah, that's probably correct.
We could do that. We could empty out.
Would you like us to not use this?
As I say, you can put one up here.
Wouldn't it be better if Craig sits over there where he could use that microphone?
Yeah, well, we've got, we've got a couple seats.
Does that one work?
And actually, can I invite one of the commissioners to come over on this side?
Yeah, I'll give you access to a microphone.
We've got a couple of locations, actually.
And Kim can move up and sit in that big chair. We'll let you in a big chair.
Get people closer.
So.
Go for it.
Sit next to Stauffer and hit some buttons.
There's an empty one here. There's an empty one here, too.
We have seats.
Space over there.
You don't have, no, you're good.
Should we pass Greg?
Yes, pass this down, pass this down.
Oh, thank you. She almost lost it.
All right. I think we're settled.
Good.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Valeria Riddell has an Economic Development Coordinator, and I'm here with Alex Joyce and Garland Woodsong from Cascadia Partners. They're consultants for Cottage Cluster Feasibility Study Fund the Byte Metro and also our ADU Study Court Update. So they're going to take it away with the presentation, I'll determine one of the slides, and we're happy to answer to any questions as we go along. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Valeria. And thanks Alma, who's been with us, and Denny as well, through the process. And also the Stakeholder Advisory Group, who I'm not sure if anyone is here from that group, but they were tireless in, in kind of keeping up with a fast-moving train and, providing really great feedback. It was a great group of folks from the community representing community interests, including property owners and.
Steven Seaman.
Hi, Steven. And interested stakeholders. So as part of our team, so we're Cascadia Partners, we had Opticos Design Group, which is an architecture and urban design group out of the Bay Area, JLA Public Involvement, Orange Plot. Orange Plot is a strange name, but they actually do this kind of work in the region. So we figured it'd be great to have some practitioners onboard as we talk through. So, you know, what precipitated the discussion around broadening housing choices in Milwaukee? Well, Milwaukee's arrived. So you are all intimately aware of the issue, which is that housing prices are rapidly appreciating in this community, and, you know, a quarter of households are rent-burdened, so they spend more than 50% of their income on rent. So one in four folks in the community need housing that they can't readily afford. So the demand is there, but in recent years, coming out of the recession, the supply of housing has not kept up with that demand. And until this past year, it's been really underperforming. So the projected need for new housing units is 55 to 60 units per year to keep up with demand. And coming out of the recession from 2010 to 2017, only 40 units were, were added. This past year's been a little bit more of a banner year, but still about half only of what's projected annual need been permitted. So what's being brought into the marketplace in terms of housing is really, there's only a few flavors of, of ice cream available. There's single-family homes, there's a few ADUs, and as of very recently, there's, you know, apartments, new apartment construction. So that doesn't fit everyone's lifestyle or everyone's income needs, so we commend the city for taking kind of a broad approach to broadening housing needs. And cottage clusters and ADUs are part of the puzzle. The other issue is that, you know, in Milwaukee, perhaps more so than the rest of the region, ownership, as opposed to renter, population is still going to be a pretty dominant part of the housing need. And so thinking about what kinds of product types are going to be suitable, suitable to build homeownership is really important, and cottage cluster is a very good example of that. So the, the city has a multi-pronged approach to housing affordability. This is not, Milwaukee, the cottage clusters and ADUs will not solve the affordable housing problem, but they are a piece of the puzzle. And the, some of the virtues about these two housing types are that they are missing middle housing types. And that's both to do with the scale of the buildings as, as well as the price points of these housing types. So the scale of the building mean that they can fit in the majority of neighborhoods in, in Milwaukee, but also the price points are achievable for a bigger chunk of, of the population than just single-family homes. So they're, they're smaller, more affordable units. The operative word here is, you know, price and unit size are very, very tightly interrelated. And so the, this offers an opportunity for smaller units that still are in a house form, right? So things that look like a house, but they're just smaller, and so they're more attainable. So they can fit the, the context of many of the existing neighborhoods. So there was a variety of outreach, and I want to turn it over to Valeria to talk a little bit about how some of the outreach to the broader community.
Yes, for both of the projects, we, we have stakeholder advisory groups. The SAG for Cottage Cluster Feasibility Study has 15 members, and including Planning Commissioner representative, the Clackamas Housing Authority, a representative from CPAC, property owners, Metro, a nonprofit organization, NDA liaisons. As well for our ADU code audit, we also have a subject expert matter group, and that's made out of 11 representatives, and all of these are in the attachments that I provided. So in that part, we have worked very closely with them. Almost every three months, we've had a meeting with them where we've presented and gathered feedback and revised some of our document, documents based on that. Further, or moreover, we, the subject matter expert, at least for the ADU, our first meeting was earlier this year, and we're coming up with our second meeting in May. And alongside with that, we also have internal, an internal working group. So we work also with engineering, with planning. So we're working on both ends to make sure that recommendations are feasible on our end, but they're also, you know, have the input of the community on that end. And as you know, we had our open house, our missing middle open house. We had 60 people who signed in, but we believe that there was much higher attendance. It was a really great turnout. And we've continued to receive comments about it. All the materials of that event was posted online on our website. We have as, our housing projects page is solely designed to have all of our materials and all of the information for our cottage cluster feasibility studies, as well as our ADU. That's updated, and that's now available to read in Spanish as well. Besides that, we've had a couple of times where we'd submitted posts for the pilot. So a lot of people have been able to read that these are projects that are happening in the city, and they are more than welcome to send in any comments. We've had people come into our building and want to talk to me just about that, just want to hear more. So people are interested, and we are providing the space and the opportunities to hear those comments and gather those responses in terms of the event that has been advertised in social media. And as you might have seen, we have gotten comments from, from those sources as well, from those outlets. So we've been very intentional about the outreach that we provided for these two projects. If you want to add anything.
Well, at the, towards the end of the presentation, we have some of the results from the feedback that we received at the open house on April 3rd. I know several of you were there. So there's an opportunity to kind of talk about the, the feedback that we received from the public. So we're going to break this presentation into two parts. One focused on the cottage cluster study, and then we will also address the accessory dwelling unit portion of the, the work that we've done. So it's, the project has been roughly one year. It was divided into three phases of work. We had an early learning phase where we, as the project team, learned what the parameters of the existing cottage cluster code ordinance were, and also understood from the Stakeholder Advisory Group what the goals were for the project. So we were learning. And then there was a design phase where we worked with our design team, but also with the property owners and the SAG to come up with design ideas for actual sites, for actual sites in the city. So we did a theoretical exercise about how might policy changes impact things like affordability, but then we actually played out those potential policy changes on sites, because there's no substitute for really trying things on. And then we're in the implementation phase now, where we've come up with a series of recommendations, and we've done the open house, and we're moving towards a process of, of getting a public hearing in front of council and hopefully some form of adoption. So the Stakeholder Advisory Group had a series of project goals that were established very early on in the process. They include explore missing middle housing. So missing middle housing, missing middle in particular is a, is a popular phrase these days, and we'll talk just a little bit more about what that means on the next slide. The recommendations, whatever they are, need to be financially feasible. So with a sharp eye towards economics and financial feasibility. We wanted, the, the SAG wanted solutions that would fit the needs of both owners and renters. So it wasn't just a single outcome. Reproducible models. So we would test these potential policy changes on sites that were represented more broadly in the community. So big sites, little sites, and we'll talk about those.
A quick note on that point. Also, we, we understand this is a Metro grant, and Metro is sort of looking to Milwaukee to provide some regional leadership with this project on cottage cluster, cluster housing, and accessory dwelling units. So it's not just that we want this to grow within Milwaukee, but we want Milwaukee to be set up to become a leader that other jurisdictions could follow, so that reproducible is within the city as well as beyond the city.
And just as a note, I think other cities are noticing that, because we have received inquiries from other cities in, yeah, on what we're doing and what our recommendations are for these two projects. So they are definitely in the know that we're, we're currently undertaking this and have brought a lot of interest in.
Great. And so affordability at multiple price points. So there's, there's capital A affordability, which is, you know, subsidized housing. That's not necessarily what we're addressing here, although there could be nonprofit builders who build to, to deeper needs, but also workforce housing. These are a set of strategies that are particularly effective at building up, you know, a supply of workforce housing in the community. And then cultivate community through the process. I think the open house is a great example of that, where folks got to come out and see these things and then share their opinions. So not knowing how familiar everyone is with the concept of missing middle housing, it's, it's an interesting idea that is really rooted in the history of how we used to build cities in this country, and we've kind of gotten away from it. So, you know, in many pre-war cities, there was a variety of housing stock that was built for all kinds of different family shapes and sizes. And we've, we've not done so well at building that type of housing in many cities around the country anymore. We do really well at building detached, single-family homes on the left, and mid-rise, you know, apartment buildings on the right. But there's a range of different housing styles that are, many cities are exploring, trying to reintegrate those into the fabric of their community. They're already there, it's just they're illegal to build in most communities anymore. So on that spectrum, you know, that middle spectrum on the bottom, cottage court or cottage cluster is just one type. Right? There's many other types, but it's one type. This just gives you an example, some built examples from around the region. This is a bungalow court, so these are standalone, you know, homes that are clustered around a common green with a variety of price points. Some of them are a little bit bigger, some of them are smaller. This is a, a version of a court-style development that actually has shared walls. So you can't really see them from this image, but the, these are townhome style, right? So they have, they share a wall between the units, which can improve energy efficiency and reduce cost. So the, the first obvious finding, as we went through this iterative fact-finding learning stage in the beginning, was that cottage clusters really are only allowed in a very, very small portion of the city today. They are, it's, it's interesting, because they are really a, a house form, a single-family house style of development, but they're not allowed in the areas of town where you would want to build that type of development. So in 86.5% of the city, they're not allowed by right. And in the areas where they are allowed, they're competing in the marketplace with much higher intensity land uses, and so that puts them at a disadvantage. And so as a result, Milwaukee hasn't seen this style of development.
So that 86% number, I was looking at your chart, that's, you've also included industrial and commercial in there, right? So that's, that's a little, you know, misleading, because no housing is allowed in those areas. So if I'm adding correctly, it looks like it's 60% of Milwaukee where housing is allowed, but not these.
Where single-family is the, is the, the primary use, yeah. Right, right.
Right.
Yep. This is just the areas where they're just prohibited.
I thought our single-family took up 70%. Alma, somebody?
Right. So this is allowed in 10% or?
No.
Yeah.
It's not allowed in any of our single-family neighborhoods.
So the, within the 13.5% of the, percent of the zones area of the city where it is permitted, only about 142 lots are actually buildable under the current regulatory standards, under the current development regulations.
But build, where you can build the maximum of 12.
12 units, correct.
On each lot.
Okay, that was.
So there's like, basically what that means is that there's 142 lots large enough to build 12 units on. It's a very small fraction of the community.
And in many cases, those lots are big enough, you could build 12 sort of standard single-family.
Probably not 12, but you could, in many cases, you could subdivide them and build a few standard single-family.
Because there's a cap of 12 in the current cottage cluster code, it's possible you could build 100 on some of those lots.
No, no, I was, I was saying that, yeah, never mind. It's all right.
That's the path, that's the most logical path of least resistance, the way the current code is set up. That's what a rational person would do. You're absolutely right. They would make the decision to do that if they were going to develop.
Rather than put 12. Rather than put twelve and have a whole bunch of leftover land.
Exactly, exactly. So small sites are really limited by the density limits. So, you know, like most places, Milwaukee is comprised of really small lots near the center of town and then much larger lots in the areas that were, you know, more recently annexed from the county. And so if you look at both ends of the lot size spectrum, the areas closest to town where there are small lots, they're really limited by the density maximums, right? And so effectively, for, this is an example of a twelve thousand square foot site, so imagine like a double lot. You can effectively, you hit the density limit at four units.
Wait, so even though our code says you can build twelve, there's a density cap that keeps you from being able to actually build twelve.
There's a density cap and there's an absolute number maximum. So there's both things are in the code. So on the other end of the spectrum, a large site can only build twelve. And so no matter how big it is, you can only ever build twelve. And so you either, someone makes the decision to build twelve and then they have a bunch of excess land like you were talking about, or more rationally, they probably just do a subdivision and build single-family homes, right? And so it doesn't work on those two ends of the spectrum well at all. So then also the parking and onsite auto circulation standards really limit the ability to create this courtyard style of development where you have, so the blue houses are the ones that would be precluded from being developed to accommodate the onsite parking and circulation standards. And so in this example, you'd end up with four and you'd have, you wouldn't be able to, you really wouldn't be able to create the cluster around the central green with the setbacks and the, the on-street park, the off-street parking standards. Whoops, getting ahead of myself here. So we did a series of those sensitivity analyses and we'll talk a little bit about the affordability implications of those in just a second, but at the end of the day, there's, like many things in life, there's no silver bullet answers, right? There's no single standard change that is going to solve everyone's problem in this code. So it's going to require multiple changes, tweaks. And then, and our recommendations are to consider a package of changes to make it the most feasible and to allow detached version of this particular style of development in all residential zones. So everywhere that it's not allowed today, you would allow a detached version of this, a single-family version of this code. Allow attached versions of this, like the example we told you before, based on a policy linkage, which is areas that are well-served by transit and walkable commercial areas. So areas where you want to encourage a mix of housing and jobs already, allow the unattached version of this product type because that then, that also creates more affordability and a higher level of, of residential activity on the site. In general, our recommendations are focused around regulating the building form rather than an absolute density number. The density number, you know, if you have a small lot, really poses challenges. It's not a great regulatory hammer. What people really care about is the regulation of the form. What is it going to look like? How is it going to fit the site? How is it going to fit in with the surrounding uses and land uses? And so with Opticoast, the design firm on the team, they specialize in form-based code. It's no wonder we ended up there, but what, we tried to boil down the essence of what people found important and balance that with the feasibility components of the project. And it really came down to what people can see from the street and then how the buildings can relate to a central green space is really core to these type of development. So reducing some of the setbacks and open space requirements and we'll, I don't know if we have a slide on the open space. I thought we had that in here. Do you know?
I don't think so.
No, unfortunately, we don't have that in there. But basically the, when you add up all of the setbacks and the open space requirements that are in the current cottage cluster and you try and do your development, you basically are left with only enough land to do front porches.
I thought I saw.
Oh, that slide's in there.
You did have that.
Is it in here?
We do have that.
Oh, I must've skipped over it. This was a particularly illuminating process, design process to go through where you have, you know, you add, you sort of add up all of the math around all the setbacks and the open space requirements and all you're left with is the front porch area of four buildings and parking.
That's only because front porches are allowed in the setback.
And so obviously no one's going to build that, but, you know, you play out these things as they are in the code and you learn from that.
But I mean, that's a six thousand square foot site, right? And I mean, that's not, never going to hold your twelve, our twelve max.
No, I don't know.
Cottage clusters.
But it can't even hold four.
It can't hold, it can barely hold four porches.
So.
With the setbacks.
On the setbacks, when you're doing, when you're talking about this style where you're doing a central green space or courtyard and a number of units, our code would still require a twenty-foot setback from whatever, from, I mean, what are you measuring that from? Because it's not a street.
So there's, there's eleven setbacks. The, there's the, there is a setback from the street.
Right.
To the first unit, that's the front yard of the site. There's also in the existing.
Typically back a sidewalk.
Code.
Right.
There's a, there's a second front yard required and that's the front yard between each individual unit and the common green. That's the setback into which these front porches, these hypothetical standalone front porches are intruding, is the second front yard between each unit and the common green.
Okay, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
That's, that's what we're trying to explain with this slide is that there's too many setbacks required of, of the current code and it's pushing out the possibility of any development on sites below a certain size threshold.
Yep. It's, it's helpful to go through these and somewhat humorous sometimes to go through these exercises because you understand really clearly why you're not getting what you thought you were gonna, what you thought you were signing up for. So.
Well, I'm not sure, having been on the planning commission then, I'm not sure anybody thought, was really expecting to see a cottage cluster on a six thousand square foot lot. I think we were thinking bigger lots, you know, the ten thousand.
There's nothing in the current code that would prohibit it.
No, I know, it's, it's in those zones, it's allowed in those designated zones, but I mean, I think what we talked about and what we envisioned was bigger lot, you know, ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots.
I think it's important to clarify, we've, we've done a little bit of sensitivity testing in this project and we've been testing the code in a number of different ways to see where it breaks. And one of our sensitivity tests was how small of a site can you get to before the code breaks? Physically as well, as a site design exercise, like if you have, say, three or four units, what's the smallest, you know, think tiny homes, right? If you're going to have a tiny home cluster, what's the smallest site on which that makes sense before it stops making sense and becomes ridiculous? So that's sort of what we're testing here on a six thousand square foot site. Could you do a cluster of tiny homes there or would the code require stuff where it's ridiculous of the code requirements, even if the physical form of four tiny homes may fit, may make sense? So.
Yep.
There's, there's, there may be a reasonability threshold in there where it's not reasonable to do a cottage cluster below some, some line. I think we'll get to that a little bit later in the presentation, but that's something to think, think about is whether a reasonable applicant would ever bring to you a proposal for a cottage cluster below a certain size.
And I really appreciated that you went to the extent that you did with all of that, all of those different thought experiments were really fascinating and really helpful to me. So thank you for, for going into such depth on that.
You're welcome. And so we have some strategic reductions to setbacks and open space requirements that we think still live up to the intent of the zone, but actually results in a feasible project. We'll get into some of the specifics there. Also onsite parking is always a challenge in any, you know, any development style, but it, it's a particular challenge in this type, style of development where structured parking is not financially feasible. And so you're always going to get either surface parking or garage-style parking, like actually, you know, residential garage-style parking. And so it will always eat up lot area. And so there's, there's a right balance somewhere in there and we've made some recommendations around reductions to parking standards, some of which are general, but some of which are also tied to policy objectives like are you located near frequent transit and walkable commercial areas, right? Where you have some trade-offs in density that you've already decided to make as a Not a physical thing, but a very important thing for the financial, from a financial feasibility perspective is a reduction or waiving of fees. These include system development charges and frontage improvement fees. So there's a fee-in- lieu program that's an option for folks who don't have their, you know, their frontage is not built to the current city standards, they can pay into a fund. It's incredibly expensive. We're talking on a, on a, you know, a site that, of the size that we've been talking about here, it can easily get in excess of a hundred thousand dollars for the frontage and the system development charges can be, you know, twenty thousand dollars or more. And so when you're talking about spreading those costs across a handful of units, it becomes, it either will result in the project not happening because it's not financially feasible, or it will raise the price of those units. And so that's a trade-off, you know, any city has to make is what's, what's the right policy objective.
May I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
If housing is market-based and if the regional partners have these charges, what is the guarantee that if you lower fees or, or change the frontage, that that still isn't going to be market rate and that the developer just doesn't take the profit?
Yeah, if you don't create a legal connection, then there isn't a guarantee, but you better believe that with the fees there, it will get passed on. I mean, there's a guarantee that it will get passed on if it's there. There can be legal hooks that require workforce housing to, to get those kinds of offsets and many communities have said, we will waive your STCs if this, that, and the other thing happens. In other words, if you agree to deed-restrict a unit to workforce housing affordable to a hundred percent AMI, et cetera. So you can have legal hooks, but without addressing that issue, it will definitely get passed on to the end user and result in higher housing prices. That I can guarantee you.
And I just wanted to say, we do have our construction excise tax fund, which could potentially be used to partially waive some of the fees, but that hasn't been programmed and we're still working on creating an oversight committee for that. But those funds are being accumulated, so just to tie away kind of like the legal part of it on how to move that forward.
Are you going to talk more later about the, what you just said about things, you know, deed restrictions and that kind of things to assure workforce housing? No?
It's not part of the presentation, but I'm, we can if you like.
Well, we can, I don't want to derail you, but we, we can come back to that.
I think it's, it's an important policy discussion to have. So, I thought you brought it up. So as we went through and tested these, this is a busy slide and I'll walk you through a few of these things, but as we went through and tested these policy changes, we wanted to understand, our lens for the purpose of the project was housing affordability, right? And housing accessibility. And so the, the, the thing that's on the shelf today is sort of the standard single-family home and there've been a dozen or more homes built in the last year that have been, have sold, been built new and sold for over half a million dollars. That's kind of, that's what's on offer, right? And so if you sort of use that as your benchmark, allowing the current cottage cluster code standard in single-family areas, which would result in, you know, four units on, what is this, is a, what size is this?
Fourteen thousand.
It's a fourteen thousand square foot site, hypothetical site, right? So fourteen thousand square foot site, current cottage cluster standard would allow you to get four units. So having those four units would reduce the, the price significantly. If you were to then allow for an additional unit on the site, so getting that extra fifth unit by lifting or raising the density limit, you get down to where you're eighty-two percent AMI, area median income. So anything below a hundred and twenty percent of area median income is considered workforce, that eighty to a hundred and twenty. So now you're, now you're starting to get into solidly workforce housing territory without providing a direct subsidy to a project. And that is, as you say, is no guarantees, but you can, the same return rate has been balanced for all of these. So if, if, if a developer is only out to get their same return rate, all things being equal, they can do that by hitting these, these, these different outcomes. So reducing setbacks and separation standards is obviously, you know, critical to get an extra unit or two, reducing private and shared yard standards, allowing on-street parking to count. So you're not reducing the onsite requirement, you're just allowing areas in front of your lot where you have public parking to count towards your otherwise off-street parking. Increase height to two full stories. Currently, the code is one and a half stories, right? So it allows you to get a little bit more of a skinny unit. And then allow attached units onsite, which we talked about, having that kind of place-based nexus in, in the code, because those are more cost-effective and they're more energy efficient. We're not modeling energy efficiency or utility costs, but they're more energy efficient.
So those calculations were done with our current STCs and with our current frontage improvements?
That is correct. I don't think we removed those out of there for these, yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question. So these are very encouraging numbers. Have you actually seen these kinds of reductions in units in a real location?
Yeah, look at the Cooper Court example.
Cooper Court?
So the, it's, it's our town. So this project was built in nineteen ninety-nine by Rose CDC Southeast Portland. It's at Eightieth and Southeast Cooper.
I've actually seen this place.
Yeah, it's, did you go on the tour?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this was one of the stops on your tour. I sold a client a home here for, I think it was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand a few years ago. That's resale. So these prices have continued to stay affordable. I think we need to caveat this price point. This is built by a nonprofit developer, so they're not seeking an eighteen percent return for their investors. They're mission-driven. It was built in the nineties, so it was built in a different construction cost timeframe. And yet, I think this does tell us which way the wind blows when you do an attached courtyard housing product type, that you, you get something that is fairly similar to the numbers we're coming up with in the sensitivity tests.
This example's a little bit newer and it includes a broader spectrum of home sizes, but you can see the price points are, you know, they top out at four hundred and fifty, but they're, they're everything in between, down to a hundred and thirty thousand for smaller, smaller unit.
Yeah, we saw this place too, yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Just before we move away from Cooper Point, I just looked it up. A unit sold in twenty sixteen for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and it was two beds and one bath. That makes, is that a land trust model that they used here?
Community Development Corporation, very similar.
Just wondering if they have a restriction on the amount of.
Appreciation.
Appreciation.
No, I don't know.
You don't know?
Something.
So in that, in the next example or the previous example, could you explain to me the economics of the, right, the old adages in real estate, don't buy the biggest house on the block because your appreciation doesn't rise as much as everybody else's? So what is the incentive for the person to buy the twenty-six hundred square foot house in that scenario and spend the four hundred and fifty thousand?
It was the existing unit, I think, wasn't it, the existing unit on the site?
I happen to know the guy who bought that house and he sold his previous house and he had the cash and he really wanted to live in this development and he loved it. He loved the feeling of community. He, he loved the neighbors, he knew some of the neighbors he was going to move in with and he was really close friends with the developer as well.
And to be clear, four hundred and fifty thousand is not the most expensive house on the block.
No, not.
Well, right, no, I get that. So is he the one that developed around the house?
No, he was just one of the buyers.
One of the buyers, okay.
Developer didn't ever live here. This also, it's important to understand, this is a code hack, this is not a cottage court development legally. It's two houses and two ADUs on two lots.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I got you, okay.
So that the, the smaller price point, those are the ADUs, the larger price points are the main houses.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let me fast forward a little bit here. So.
That slide is that development. Come on, the next slide forward. By the way, there.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, right, yeah, good point.
Oh, I see.
State and Court.
There you go.
And each one of those ADUs is a separate entity from the main house?
Yeah.
They're not, they're not, the owner of the house does not own the, or rent out the ADU owner?
Condominium.
Okay.
So it's a, the condominium association owns the commons and then each of the homes is sold on the market, traded separately.
Oh, I see, okay. So there's an HOA fee or something within that?
A very small one.
Right.
So I guess the, the top line takeaway for, for me is two here. One is that there's, again, no silver bullets, but that there are several things that make a substantial difference in terms of deepening affordability, lowercase affordability, right? Affordability within the market. So I wanted to move into our testing. So we tested, the four property owners were on the stakeholder advisory group, which was great to have motivated property owners interested in the project and willing to let us use their sites as, as examples. sites as, as examples. And these were representative. We went back and forth to the city over a number of weeks to kind of select, select four candidate sites that were representative of other sites. These are not necessarily snowflake sites, right? These are like sites that you'd find in other parks of, of town. So there's the deep and skinny lot, right? You know, this, everyone knows this kind of lot, where this is probably the most design-challenging site that we looked at, because a courtyard is generally more of a square than a long rectangle, right? But there was a couple of innovative solutions that came out of this. One, at the rear of a lot, there is an opportunity to do a traditional courtyard style. Two, the drive aisle, which is what it looks like, is just a simple drive aisle down the middle, can actually be designed in such a way that it is an extension of basically a hardscaped courtyard, right? So you have, design it at very low speeds, you have traffic calming. You also just design it so there's clearly a people place first and a drive aisle second. And it's, it's a drive aisle, so you're going to get traffic very infrequently. It's not a street.
So just a note about this, we've, we've been having some discussions with staff about ways to communicate through the, the design of that drive aisle, that it's a space for people first, where, where cars are guests when they need to travel through it, but that it's not a place for cars. And there's a couple of different pathways that we've discussed going with design standards for a situation like this. The first would be an example that Neil brought to us, one of our staff members at Cascadia from San Diego, from a case study heated down there, where, or maybe it was actually Los Angeles, where they have a green and a curb cut at the street. And then you have two, what looked like two parallel pathways leading onto the site with grass between them. Those are your wheel tracks for the driveway. And so it reads like a lawn with two sidewalks, and yet the, the cars can travel across it when they need to get into the parking area in, in the middle or the back of the lot. So that's one, is, is to make it look more like greenscape. The other is to use cobblestones and permeable pavers so that it reads more like a courtyard rather than a greenscape. So ways to soften that, that space and make it for the community.
And I, and I did, when I read that and imagined it, it did soften it a little bit. The thing that, when we pushed that hard on, on trying to squeeze, and I totally, I'm with you, and we're trying to make these as affordable as possible. I was imagining that and then trying to imagine where the hell I would plant a tree on that piece of property. And it's really, you could maybe plant four of them on, you know, two on either side of the parking lot. And that's kind of it, unless they were very, very, very small trees. So you, you know, you've got a courtyard, but when you go up into the old neighborhoods, like you're talking about where the missing middle existed before, and some of the units that are really cool, where there are rows of, of kind of townhome, you know, it's like a shared, three shared walls or something, porches and all that. But in the middle of the courtyard, those huge old trees. And the difference for the people that live there, particularly in the summer, but really just all the time, is extraordinary. And I was imagining, okay, grass and these drive aisles and no trees.
So we did a, we did a little design study for each of our sites, because Denny brought it to our attention, that there is this 40% tree coverage standard in Milwaukee. And so we were concerned about this, because we share your concern that a, a site without trees is not a site that's, you know, particularly livable. And I'm happy to share with you that if you assume that over the lifespan of a tree, of the time it takes for a tree to grow, for, for a broad canopy tree to, into its full canopy, and then you, you, you put that on the site, none of these sites get below 51% tree coverage and some of them get above 70%, even this one. Because you're not just.
The two back corners there.
Yeah.
Is right next to the.
The greens between those houses.
Strategic location, but they're, they can be there.
Yeah. Think, think of a street tree and how small of a space it needs, right? For that box and then it grows into.
They actually need a little bit more than they're typically given on the street, but.
Yeah. Right. Can be an issue, but.
Yeah.
So in some of these, there's some elements, fixed elements of the sites we designed around, and one of them is a big mature tree and we'll talk about, because that was a priority for the owner.
To me, that's one of the exciting things about a cottage cluster concept. We have a development that infuriated a lot of people because it took out.
70 trees? Does anybody remember?
Something like that.
A lot of trees on, on a lot that was classic cottage cluster, right? And cottages could have been tucked in amongst the trees.
Right.
But in order to build the classic neighborhood with all the ways that they went in and basically clear-cut it.
Right.
And I think there were six trees that ended up staying or something.
I think that's a really important point, is that if compared to a lot of other styles of development, cottage cluster can be the most tree-friendly style of development because each of these has their own pad and it doesn't have to be, they're not interlocking pad sites, right? They can be placed around existing features, so that's natural features as well as trees. So this is a site here where it's kind of classic near-square, medium, small to medium-sized infill lot. It's kind of, let's think of it as like a double lot. So this site here, we've got a side drive aisle, we've got a center court where most of the units face the center court. There's one unit on the bottom left that faces the street. And then there's some smaller units above the three garage bays where you have those sideways triangles on the site plan. So there's a couple of trees on this site as well that were designed around. You can see them in this, in the plan view. This is, you know, at the further edges of the community where you have these larger once rural lots that were in the county and some point, point annexed and, and flag lots. These are, I think, what most people think of as classic cottage cluster court-style development sites. There's an opportunity to do multiple, because in the standards, you have to have a certain amount of shared green space per unit. There's an opportunity, there's an, indeed a requirement to do, would be to do multiple clusters around common greens. So this is sort of, and then on the, on the northwest portion of the site plan, there's a slope there with trees that would be, in this example at least, they would stay as they are. You can design around that.
So I noticed you used the word carriage houses in your, in your materials and I took that to mean apartments over garages.
Correct.
So those are not ownership properties?
They would be ownership.
They would still be ownership properties, but they would, but the, the garage part would be part of the common ownership?
No, not necessarily. It could be sold and deed restricted to one of the primary units, or it could be, any number of things could happen with that. It depends on how the condo docs are prepared. So the last example we looked at is kind of in between the skinny and the square. It is, this is the site that had the very large mature tree. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner of the site plan, it was designed around as well as an existing house. The owner wanted to keep the existing house. And so how would you orient a, an access point and then a common green in two locations? So the front common green would be around the shared, the mature tree. And then the rear common green would be around a new common green created, which this particular owner wanted to have more kind of an orchard feel, so have fruit trees as part of the greens.
So can I just ask one real quick? I'm looking at the pricing of a three-bedroom cottage and let's say it's going to be a rental unit. That would still rent for about $2,200 a month, right? If ownership level is 1570 a month, and I don't know if that, that includes taxes or what all that means and your mortgage rate.
It's just P and I. I think it's just P and I, right? Principal and interest, I think, is what.
Just principal and, so add, add on another 800 bucks in taxes, so, you know, your mortgage, you would still, that would still rent for over $2,000, right?
It could.
800 a month in taxes?
Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
A year.
Uh, no, four, four, it's $4,000 a year or so.
Annual.
Yeah. Not an annual. Sorry, I was doing my math in my head very well.
It's like, wow, your taxes are a lot higher.
But I, right? I mean, so is that really, is that considered affordable or workforce housing?
From an owner perspective, buying it, it is at 84% MFI, median family income.
Okay.
It's not affordable with a capital A, but it's workforce.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're going to shift gears unless there's questions into the ADU portion?
Well, I still wanted to under, I didn't understand this. How many unit? 10 units? So it's.
So there's the primary house.
Mm-hmm.
There's, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. This is a duplex here.
duplexes.
So, so just, that's a good point. This is an example where we tested the attached, the ability to do attached units, the only example where we tested that.
If you go back to.
So the three are duplexes?
You see that this is really close to the, the neighboring commercial center, to King Road Transit.
And a multifamily.
To this large apartment complex. So we're, we're doing a thought experiment where this site gets upzoned from R7 to R3 to match its location.
We didn't have a perfect site for, that was already R3, so the owners were interested in.
So we, we use this to, to test a multifamily or at least the attached option. So all of those big rectangles, the kind of salmon-colored ones, they should all really be the same color. Those are duplexes.
Okay.
And then, so that's two, four, six, eight, and then the carriage houses are one unit each, nine, 10, and then the existing house is 11.
The existing house. Okay.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. Good question. Thanks for running that up. Okay. So I'm going to shift gears. Is that okay?
Uh, there, there's a break needed before we get into ADU.
Oh, okay.
So, um, five minutes? Okay. We will take a five-minute recess.
Okay. Five minutes is good.
Five minutes is good. Too much water. Way too much water.
Okay, we're back on and starting into the ADU portion of our missing metal conversation.
Great. So I think this group is pretty well-accredited with ADUs, but it's worth reminding ourselves what really is an ADU, and they're not just one thing. They are a unit that is on a site that is accessory to a primary unit, was sort of the legal leagues version, but they can be attached, they can be detached, they can be internal to the primary home, or they can be, you know, some combination of that. It's an opportunity, I think, that a lot of communities have embraced because it is a softer form of density that can be integrated into existing neighborhoods without a lot of disruption for how people experience the neighborhood from the street. Really, that's really fundamental as we talk about these things, is, you know, neighbors experience the front of the house and the experience from the street. But it's also, from a financial perspective, it is important because it can help align with the age, you know, different age groups, different mobility and accessibility needs that maybe the existing historic structures don't accommodate. It can be at a price point that is not affordable in other units types within that particular neighborhood. And importantly, I think, increasingly importantly for folks aging in place, or for young families, it can be a source of supplemental income. You know, neighborhoods aren't getting any cheaper, and so these can be a vehicle to afford the primary home in general. They have a lot of different names, granny flats, carriage houses, in-law units, backyard cottages, but essentially it's the same thing. It's the secondary unit on the site. So we did a series of sensitivity testing, and we'll show the same color-coded graph here in a second, around a series of policy choices, a narrower set of policy choices, but equally important, and came to several key findings that are aligned with what other cities are doing as well, so these are best practices. One of the key ones is allowing two ADUs per residence, one that is, but only one that is detached. Right? So one that would be either built above a garage or a standalone detached, but then one that's also built as a, you know, an extension on a house, or in a basement, or within the current envelope, within an envelope of the primary unit. That's the most significant policy change in terms of affordability, yes.
So if one were above the garage, it wouldn't be considered attached?
It would not be considered attached, unless the garage were attached.
Well, yeah. I guess that's what I was thinking in my...
If the garage is detached and there's a unit built above it, it would be considered detached.
Then it's detached, gotcha, yeah.
Yep.
There's a, just a quick note on this. We considered allowing two attached units to soften the impact on the yard, but there's a building code issue here. If you were to allow two attached accessory units to your primary unit, then you kick that primary unit into the commercial building code because you've exceeded the threshold of two units out of the residential building code. Seems like that's just not something you would want to subject a homeowner to in terms of the order of magnitude of additional work they'd have to do to retrofit their home to meet the commercial building code.
It triggers a lot higher standard of life safety requirements like sprinklers.
And so defeats the affordability point.
Right.
It just is unlikely to get taken up as a policy change because of the cost prohibitive nature of it, so it's a good point. So reducing system development charges, some of these are similar to the cottage cluster, is important. Currently, SDCs are charged, I think all but one of, one class of fees within the SDC bundle are charged at the same rate, and so it's a pretty significant cost burden for a very, very small unit. It's in the double digits of cost addition, and so it's important. Many, many cities have waived SDCs. I think there's some fine tuning going on regionally about what projects are eligible for SDC waivers. You know, are they long-term renters in there versus short-term renters? Are they deed restricted to some affordability level? That's a further policy discussion, but fundamentally, they are cost prohibitive. Either so they end up being more expensive, or they end up not happening, and based on our conversations, it's more that they just end up not happening because they're so expensive.
And just to note, at the same time, or at least on that note, we don't control all of our SDCs. Some of them, and the majority, are controlled by the county, so...
So an intergovernmental agreement would have to be struck there, so then there may be a policy discussion about what is the purpose. So reducing parking requirements, even, you know, when you're retrofitting a site, adding additional parking is probably the most complicated thing you can, when you're adding, potentially adding a building and parking, and an additional parking, onto a site that already has a building, that already has a driveway, maybe it's not in the ideal location, maybe it deadens at the front of the house, and anyway, it's just retrofitting existing lots that already have an existing home and an existing driveway with an additional parking space can be, and we heard, can actually stop deals from happening. So reducing the parking requirement's gonna be important. The review process, streamlining that, allowing it to be an ADU to be approved through a type one as a by right process, will reduce the time, processing time, as long as they're in compliance with all of the regs. Ease the design limitations, so this includes some height, some location, locational requirements. They're very prescriptive in the code right now, and we would, we think that there's more latitude that can be given and still respect the placement of these as secondary units. Owner restriction, so there's an owner occupancy restriction currently, if you just wanna build an ADU regardless of who the end user is. Doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to us from a policy perspective, so we would urge removing that, if, or being more specific about what your intended outcomes are.
And there's two issues with that owner occupancy requirement that were flagged by DLCD and by Metro's assessment of ADUs. The first is enforceability. Who's gonna be going out there year after year, property transaction after property transaction, making sure that there's still an owner on the property, month in and month out? Number two is financing. The lender may see that and may decide that that's too big of a risk because of that, and may just decline to fund. It's hard enough to get ADU financing as it is, so adding one more hurdle to get the financing to construct an ADU, it seems like that's, if that's a hurdle, it can be easily removed. There needs to be a really, really compelling argument for maintaining that hurdle, and it seems fairly clear that the new policy consensus is that that compelling argument no longer exists for this ownership requirement.
I have a question about that. So that's put in place so that neighbors have a sense of security that there's a, you know, a person who's there long-term in the neighborhood. Do you know of data or some kind of studies around that? I mean, is there like higher crime if there's not an owner on site, or not, or, you know, are there like more police issues in general, or, you know, anything like that? I'm just curious about, you know, backing, like if the thought is to remove that, then you would be armed with some statistics that show that having the owner on site doesn't really play a role.
The statistic that springs to mind is that the majority of the Portland City Council is now made up of renters. So why are we afraid of renters?
That's true, and I would say that the, there are ways to make property owners accountable without requiring them to be an owner of one of the units. And I think if the goal is to have accountability, then I think there's a clear and objective way to do that, like you already, if you're renting, you know, you're already required to register for a business license. So that information is known and actually gathered by the city, and so there's a way to make that, you know, make that information available to neighbors if there's a problem property. I would argue that that's maybe a more, you know, straightforward way of getting to the end goal, because that requirement is restricting people from building ADUs. So if the goal is to make it more straightforward, that would be one thing we'd flag.
But you flagged the enforceability, and that goes to, I wonder if that also goes to some of the other things we've talked about and you alluded to before about putting restrictions on sales pri, you know, deed restrictions, or putting on, like we've talked before about putting on restrictions against short-term rentals. So you've got the same enforceability issue there too, right? You know, what keeps somebody...
Deed restriction, I mean, I guess because you're thinking that maybe there could be some like exchange of money outside of the recorded sale of the transaction? I mean, it seems like there...
Deed restriction's a legal document, I mean, that's a little more enforceable, but I would say that to the extent you kind of separate policy changes that are in a by right bucket and incentives, right? So incentives usually have some sort of like more noble policy, objective, policy changes by right that just make it easier to do what you said you already wanted to do. I'd put that in this bucket, but if it's the, if the intention is to produce more long-term rental units, then if you're offering an incentive, like we will give you an SDC waiver, which costs the city money, I mean, that money's gotta come from somewhere, right? If the incentive is to create long-term affordable, long-term rental housing, I, that is a more effective tool in my mind, because it doesn't preclude someone from doing it, but just paying the city to do it. And if it's the stated objective of the code anyway, then there should be a viable way to get from A to B, but then have an alternate route that gives some broader community benefit too.
And we track, or we attempt to track.
I don't think we do very...
If they're using any of the standard systems, it's trackable, right?
We also track home rentals, isn't it? If you have, is it more than one, or I can't remember what...
Just one, yeah.
Just one.
One or more.
You have to have a business license.
You have to have a business license, yeah, so...
So there's, the last thing on the slide is that right now, there's a relationship between the size of the primary unit and the size of the ADU, which on its face makes a lot of sense, except if you happen to live in an older, very, very small house.
Right.
And then you don't really have the option of doing an ADU, and your site may be, may have the most buildable area of anyone in the neighborhood, because your primary unit is really small. And so thinking about what is a logical maximum size for an ADU, so that it is a smaller house than you could build if it was a primary unit, but allowing those folks to still be able to build an ADU, so having a maximum size of 700 square feet, right? So decoupling that, but still recognizing that this is an accessory dwelling unit and has a maximum size, that'll also help keep the price down. So we did some of these sensitivity testing, same, you know, idea here, is that, you know, kind of benchmarking against what a single unit goes for. So the single-family home plus the attached ADU provides for a cheaper primary unit, right? Because it's spreading your land costs around to an additional unit, and as obviously the ADU, if it were condoed and sold, this is through an owner lens. You could do the same analysis, which is on the right, which is through a rental lens, assuming the single-family, their original home is not rented but owned. So two units, again, detached is gonna be a little bit more expensive just because of the nature of building new from the ground up, but still within workforce housing range. Removing a parking requirement has an impact on the bottom line price, and then removing parking requirements and SDCs drives it further into that workforce housing affordability realm. So all these add up to the ability to do workforce housing without a, without a subsidy, which is, in the age of scarce resources, is a pretty nice outcome.
So we, conversations we've been having about SDCs is instead of straight-up waiver, to try and build an SDC system that's, you know, if it's a 4,000 square foot house, it's X amount, if it's a 400 square foot house, it's Y amount, or steps or whatever, but not just a straight-up waiver, because that gets into all kinds of other headaches. But I think it's, you could very easily make the argument, and I think this should be done statewide, that impact fees, which is what, you know, SDCs are, should be based on the actual impacts.
Yep.
And there's not gonna be as much impact from a 400 square foot house as there is from, I mean, people always make the argument, "Well, but what if only one person lives in the 400, 4,000 square foot house? Too bad, then he should pay more because he clearly can afford it."
I think that's an excellent way to go about it, and we're actually recommending to several clients right now that very approach, to municipalities who want to not disproportionately cost burden smaller, more affordable units, and essentially subsidize very, very large units, because as a percentage of the cost, it's very de minimis, the larger you get. So I think that's a very good approach.
I mean, I think it's great policy, but it's also not in our control, right? Our SDCs are, in fact, I brought, I mean, our SDCs, A, are about the lowest in the region, and they are, you know, the ones that are under our control are, you know, like 30% of the total SDC pool.
This is a conversation that we have to have with...
So it's a, it's not a short-term fix.
Which is why I tried to have it at Metro, to try and drive it region-wide.
Right, yeah.
I think, and they can make a compelling argument that no one's losing money, that the current system is actually, I think, precluding these smaller units from being built, and so there's a way to grow the pie. But it does require that, the intergovernmental agreement, to be successful, so...
Can I ask a question? Do we require frontage improvements with an ADU and everything else?
You betcha.
Yeah, so when I looked into it, I mean, I have literally this much space of frontage improvement that I would have to either pay or to do, which then blew the, I mean, the SDC fee was one, but I mean, the frontage, you know, I'm spending 10 grand on putting a little, you know, a three-foot curb in.
Right.
So that was another, that's another thing that we could look at, too.
Well, in the example that you gave in the report of the fee in lieu of, it was so much higher than actually building it up. How, why?
No, I doubt it.
Well, that was in the example.
It is significantly higher.
It was, it was significantly higher.
Yeah.
Almost.
I mean, based on an actual property owner who got a cost estimate to do their frontage improvement, it was significantly higher than what they would have paid in the fee in lieu.
I believe, I believe the fee in lieu...
The other way around.
I believe the fee in lieu is based on a cost if the public were to do it, so we've built in, you know, the labor costs and everything else, as opposed to a private property owner getting a contractor.
Yeah, that was, that was Howie's experience with his place. He went and built the sidewalk himself, and it cost him about a third of what he was being told.
Really?
Yeah, and that's the example that we have here in the...
I don't think that's been everybody's experience, I would say that.
What Denny's saying is, is that...
Did it himself. He didn't hire a contractor to do it.
But even if they're using prevailing wage, union wages, and they're using...
And it's probably based on some future day, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that's...
Well, I mean, our street improvements now require the swale and the, you know, it's not just a sidewalk, it's...
Well, it depends on where you are.
Yeah.
I think from a bigger picture policy discussion, the question I would leave you with, and we don't have an answer for it, but is it the most efficient way to build a street one lot at a time? That's kind of the system you've got set up right now, and it's probably the least efficient way, cost-effective way to build a street. So...
Yeah. Kelly, did you have some...
Kelly wants to talk to us.
Hi, I only caught part of it, sorry. I'm Kelly Brooks, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I would agree, actually, with what you just said. So right now, on our local streets, our fee in lieu of is high. It's higher to pay the fee lock than it is to construct the improvements yourself, and there are definitely instances where we would rather have them pay, particularly since we have a pretty robust sidewalk program. So we actually are looking at a revision to that as a part of the master fee update. So I just wanted to let you all know that that jives with the experience I'm having right now.
That was sort of what my question was geared at. Isn't that also something that we should look at? I mean...
Yeah, it's pegged as a recommendation from the point of view of the end user, the person who receives, you know, the requirement to pay it, and the recommendation is reduce or waive, but there's a bigger picture policy discussion about how do you actually build streets then?
Right.
Right? That we can't answer in this project. So I wanted to close with just some highlights from the open house. It was incredibly well-attended, I think it was standing room only for the first round of the presentation. I know several of you were there, and some of you were there for the first round and the second round, I don't know which was better, but we had an introductory presentation, not dissimilar to what we talked about tonight, and then we had a series of boards wrapping the room, and you can see some of the pictures here, although they're quite small, but these are available for you to peruse at your leisure, including the written comments, so there was a way to just say, "I like this," or "I have concerns about it," full stop, or there was a way to have an open-ended response about different aspects.
We didn't have any of that in our packet, though, did we?
We didn't have that.
No, because we had to submit it before this happened, the day before.
Okay, just checking, I was like, I was looking for that and I didn't find it, okay.
So it's on the project website?
Yep, it was uploaded the next day. Yeah, and the summary report is in there as well, and it's also on the event page as well, if people go back to it.
Larry basically has on-time delivery, it's like, the moment it's done, it's...
[laughing]
Incredible. So, but I guess one of the things, I'll note a couple things, and, you know, not having gone to, well, just in general about the attendance, well-attended, it was demographically a lot of older folks, which I think, you know, is... It was demographically a lot of older folks, which I think, you know, was sort of representing the community. But there were also a lot of, a handful of younger families who I think brought in some interesting perspectives as well. As you can see, even at this scale, there is a lot of green on these poster boards. The only instance where you see more green, like where red is really outcompeting the, the green, is around the issue of parking.
Of course.
Yeah. That's the, that's really the only strong disagreement. And there was, there was very adamant comments on, in favor of reductions, and also in favor of a more modest approach to handling parking, right, or, or status quo. So there was, there's passion around that issue. The rest of the issues, the policy discussion issues that we had were largely in favor. So I'd just say personally, I was surprised by the level of enthusiasm around the entire issue, and I think that's great. So everyone was, came ready to engage in the conversation proactively and constructively. So we had each of the issues broken down as we did today, what you like about them, what didn't you. And then we asked, we also had, there's more posters, but we had the site plans, you know, put yourself into the shoes of someone moving to Milwaukee. Is this, what kinds of things about this do you really like? What kinds of things would be deal breakers to you? So generally supportive of the locational proposals, so allowing cottage cluster, the detached variety in all neighborhoods, allowing attached within short walk to transit, the design proposals, so regulating, generally speaking, regulating elements of form rather than density. The fee proposals was the most well-received idea because it, you know, it doesn't change the form. And then allowing locational flexibility on the site from the point of view of the ADUs, allowing, general support of allowing flexibility on the site, allowing up to two was supported. The do not require ADUs to match the primary house, the ones that we talked about, there was general support for, again, some concern, but a very divided level of concern around parking. So in conclusion, I bring you the least aesthetically pleasing slide, I'm sorry. But in conclusion, kind of a top-line roll-up of all of the recommendations here. There's a lot of detail on this slide that I'm not going to go through, but this basically is the nuance for the things that we talked about today. And as a general rule, ADUs as a type-one review, make it easier to process permits for them, allowed in all zones. Front yard vegetative area, keep it the same as the base zone, which is 40%, minimum vegetated area, 25 to 35, same as base zone. Front setbacks, 20 feet, same as base zone. Lot coverage, allow for an extra 10% lot coverage because you, some people may decide to park the unit and obviously it may be an external unit or an addition that would cover more of the site. So allow for a bonus of 10% above the base zone. And then height, no change. Parking, no additional parking required for an ADU. Right, that's functionally probably the most significant change. But it's also significant in terms of its importance to implement. Cottage cluster code, so this is the detached version, allow in all R zones. Right, so allow them in all the residential zones, the detached variety, the house form variety.
And why do you say allow ADUs in all zones? Why wouldn't that also be R zones? You're going to allow those in industrial?
We made it as a permitted right in, in all zones. That's the recommendation because it's an incredibly flexible housing type, but.
That's, so the, there's one reason why we say all zones is a recommendation, and that's non-conforming uses. So if you have a home that happens to be located in an industrial zone, you still have the right.
Which we do have a few of those, yeah, yeah.
So there can be no nuance in any of these, but this is the kind of, and this is a reaction to some of the things also that we heard at the open house. So, so we went in with a set of ideas, we heard and learned, and then we retooled. And some of the slicing and dicing that was done here was in response to that.
And has your working groups met since that then? Or this is just your work since the open house?
It's just a more nuanced version. There's nothing more dramatic here. It's just more nuance based on what we heard. So cottage cluster 50%, front vegetated, 35% minimum vegetated area for the whole site, same as the R10 zone. 15%, I'm sorry, 15-foot front setbacks, 20% bonus above the base zone. So it's the same as the duplex and townhomes that you already allow in the R zones. Right, so it's, it's already allowed as, for a certain product type.
This is for both the cottage cluster and the.
And the cottage cluster within a quarter mile, so the attached variety, that is a shared standard.
Okay.
Two stories, which is less than the base zone. Okay, so for a cottage cluster, two stories versus two and a half stories, which is allowed if you build a single-family home, you can build two and a half stories. So there's more units on the site, but they're smaller. That's kind of in keeping with the philosophy of, of the cottage. Same as the base zone, first for parking, so on-street parking counts and plus bike parking, requirement for bike parking. It's kind of a standard practice, best practice nationally. So the attached, the third, the fourth column over, the attached, so within a X distance, quarter mile, you know, short walk to frequent transit. And also walkable commercial areas, and many times those are one and the same, but it's, we thought that was an important distinction. R zones within, so site and location with sidewalk, distance to transit, front yard vegetated area 50%, minimum vegetated area for the whole site 30%, same as the R7 zone. Front setbacks 10 feet, so a little bit less of a front setback for those attached style. A little bit more of a relationship to the street, in other words. And then height, same as the base zone. So no, no, not getting more aggressive. And then parking. So the parking in the, in the key areas where you're, you're trying to incentivize walkability, we're recommending a reduction of the base standard as well as counting on-street parking. So these are areas where one could expect that someone could live without a car, right? There's a nexus between those two things. Not everybody, but some portion of, of folks. And then the, the pocket community in commercial and multifamily zones, similar standards here. And then the three stories, which is less than the base zones in the multifamily and commercial zones.
So a place I was kind of surprised you didn't test, and maybe you did, and everybody thought that was a dumb idea, but. I think our parking, there's a 20-foot setback on parking, right? There's going to be this 20-foot space and then the parking space.
Right.
You drive around the city of Milwaukee, I would say 70% of the houses, that is not the way they park. They are parked across the sidewalk half the time, and certainly they're parked right up to the sidewalk.
I don't think, I mean, the front edge of your house has to have 20-foot setback, but not plus the parking space.
Plus the parking space, right?
No, your driveway counts as.
The garage. Your, your, your legal parking space, whether it's a garage.
Require one space per unit, but it can't be in the front yard.
Yep.
So effectively it's two spaces per unit, and yet nobody actually lives like that. So that's one of those instances where I'm like, apparently that's accepted by the community that we park in the front yard.
There's, there's, maybe there could be another column on here, which is something that we're developing but didn't make it onto the slide, which is a type-two review for ADUs. Which the type-two review for ADUs, our recommendation is that would only be used in one case. And that case is a carriage house that is within a setback. So if you want to have that first 20 feet of your property used for parking on the ground floor and then put an ADU above it.
Like that example right there?
Exactly, like this example.
Oh, where there's already a garage that's.
Or you want to build it.
Non-conforming.
Or you want to build a new one, and it would, it would otherwise be a non-conforming structure. But this would provide a legal pathway for it to conform through a type-two review. And the reason why we propose a type-two review is because that's something your neighbors see from the street.
Sure.
So there, maybe they should be able to express their opinion, and that could change the character of the neighborhood.
Corner lots are, are particularly challenged in a number of these, so you know. And that's why you see that type of condition in, you know, in Irvington, other historic neighborhoods.
Oh, you see it all over, the historic part of downtown. We've got, the house I used to own had the garage, was right at the, I mean, I think two and a half feet from the lot line.
So I guess just allowing that, but with special care would be the type-two. And that, that's the end of our presentation, so.
So I had a couple of questions. Yeah, that not, that came up at, maybe at your open house, but it also came up in the CPAC meeting, the idea of the existing non-conforming garages. Do we have any sense of how many of those there are? We don't have any count of any of those.
So many, I mean, just, I mean, you could probably just look at the year of the house and just assume.
Well, I don't know. I live on a block of old houses and none of them had garages originally.
I don't mean just old, I mean the years specifically.
Oh, specific, yeah. Was any, so we've had about, you know, a half dozen ADUs built. Was any interviewing done of neighbors of those ADUs? I mean, one of the big concerns when we passed the code to allow them was, and installed all the setbacks that are now turning out to be the problems, is the concern of neighbors of, you know, retaining some privacy in their backyard and people spying into their backyard and, you know, various things like that. So I was curious as to whether any efforts have been made to interview the people who live around the, exist, the new ADUs?
No, we have not done that.
I think that'd be interesting to do.
If I could put Stefan on the spot, my question, has the Neighbor Association heard any complaints about ADUs?
Not that I've heard.
I'm Stefan Lashbrook. I chair the Llewellyn Neighborhood Association. And in the time that I've been attending the meetings regularly, at least some years, I've not heard any complaints about them, but I also, I'm not aware of any in our neighborhood.
There's, there's one right by Ball Michelle Park over Garage.
Two, because I know of another one.
Mike, isn't Michael Hall's house in your neighborhood? Do you know Michael?
I don't know.
But it's, yeah.
So I'm obviously not a source of much information.
Whether, whether, whether the, whether the Neighborhood Association has heard complaints or not, you know, is one question to ask, but it's definitely not, you know, doesn't, it's not dispositive, I guess.
But I don't know that anecdotal, you know, testimony from a single person who lives next to one.
Well, or invite them. I mean, were they noticed to come to this thing, you know? Should, should we have noticed them, you know? The other question is lot coverage. So your, your statistic or your thing on the lot coverage?
Thanks, Stefan.
Can you go back to that slide? Yeah, so 25, 35, 25 to 35 is our base zone, is what you're saying? 25 to 35 minimum vegetative area, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is minimum vegetative area, that's our.
Your base zone is as stated, so it's 35% R10, 30% R7, 25% R5. It's only required in those three zones. None of your other zones require a minimum vegetated area that I've found in the code.
But they still have a lot coverage max.
Lot coverage is separately regulated, and I believe it's 40% base. But then you're allowed a, currently a 5% bonus for an ADU or a 20% bonus for a duplex or a townhome. So that could jump to either 45% or 60%.
I didn't know we even allowed townhomes. I thought we didn't even allow townhomes. That's interesting. The, and so the people who, I mean, the thing that we've always heard about, I mean, part of what lot coverage is about is, is about stormwater. And so are there any, have, has, have these kind of recommendations been vetted with like the public works or something to talk about the stormwater?
Stormwater is an interesting thing because there's a couple of different ways to meet that stormwater standard. You can just vegetate and have infiltration satisfy the standard, you know, use permeable pavers if driveways, it's in parking areas are a concern in terms of their runoff. But there's also drywells, and, and you can use a drywell to deal with a lot more water than you might be able to deal with through infiltration, and they're really not that expensive in the grand scheme of things. So in, in, in our sense of, of these sites, we didn't really flag stormwater as a big design concern because of drywell technology and, and its ability to deal with a lot of stormwater in a, in a very small area.
And the stormwater person at JCB was actually present, and he's part of our internal group, so he, yeah. So there were no major concerns on season, just because he had got pretty much what Garland said. And on the note about notifying specific ADU renters or owners, we know, we, I mean, we heavily advertised the event, and we also have on Thursday our town hall event, which will also talk about ADUs. And so we hope that between the 60 or more people that attended that open house, plus the people attending the town hall, we'd have a more representative idea of how people feel about ADUs. And I'm happy to share the summary report of the event, and in one of the questions of the ADUs, are there any comments related to, if anything, that one has more support than the cottage cluster question, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one. You know, looking at the, you know, at the cottage clusters we saw on our little tour around town there, the thing that struck me was that a person going into one of these cottage clusters, it's a real lifestyle choice. It's, it's different from living in the traditional, you know, detached, single-family dwelling. And so, I don't know, what, what do you know about that? I mean, it's, it's, it's different. And I, I, you know, I, I think, I try to put myself in this situation, I say, you know, the communal aspects, you know, sound good. They even sound good to me, but I go, you know, I lived in a single detached family home for 30 years, and so that'd be a big jump for me. But, you know, it, it, there's, there's, there's a personal component beyond, you know, the codes and the costs and everything like that to go into one of these. Any, any, any things you could share with us in that regard?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the reasons why that's precipitated a lot of communities asking these questions about, how do we broaden our housing choices, is that the things that are on the shelf today don't meet the majority of folks' needs. And, and, and it's, and so that's one thing, but then there's looking ahead into the future. And the people, the demographic groups that are going to be driving housing policy for probably all of our lifetimes are going to be aging boomers, baby boomers, and millennials. And their preferences are starkly different from 50 years ago. And they are competing for a very, very, very small amount of housing stock that meets that demand. And so you see that play out, like the housing that rings around downtown of Milwaukee and of all, of all of the walkable areas of this region are getting bid up incredibly quickly because there's, there's, there's way more demand than there is supply for the, for a more compact style of living. And so this isn't going to fit everyone's needs. But if I were a betting person, I would bet on it meeting a big chunk of future need that it's not met, that is not met today. So from a market saturation perspective, I think it's a long time before you'd run out of interest in that. So just looking at kind of the demographic, demographic future and then the stated housing preferences of those groups, it aligns really well.
I'm actually, I've actually met people, I've been dabbling in this realm now, I think, when, when was that first event? Five years ago, four years?
For six years, yeah.
And so I've toured a lot of different cottage clusters, and I've met a lot of people who sought out the communal nature of the cottage cluster. That was actually what they wanted from it. They, they could afford whatever house they wanted, but they actually wanted to have a community. I found that really interesting.
We would have done cohousing or, or something similar to that had there been an opportunity in the place we wanted to live.
Also, as part of the Spanish focus group for our town hall today, and cottage clusters were the most preferable option out of the missing middle. We went through every single one of them, and the 13 people that were there, that was by far their favorite. They felt like they could create community there. They love the common area in between all the houses. Yeah, it, it definitely felt like home to them, so.
And I think about the people that I meet in my neighborhood who are aging out of our neighborhood, you know. I live in a, I mean, I actually live in the neighborhood where it looked like most of your samples were, you know. And I bought my house from the original owner and she had to leave because there was no place for her here in the community. And, you know, someone that I talk to on a regular basis who lives between our houses, you know, she's the same way. She's, you know, she's sad that she's going to have to leave the community here soon because there just simply isn't anything for her, you know. She's, she's, you know, she's outgrown the single-family 1950s ranch that she and her husband built, you know, 50, 60 years ago.
You mean she's, it's too much house for her now? What do you mean by outgrown?
It's the, she, she's, she's needing a little. there is no walking to a grocery store where I live, not for them anyway, you know? And there's, so I think that, you know, the changing perspectives, you know, the, the alignment of, you know, the millennials, you know, the desires and wants of millennials and, and what the boomers, you know, are now realizing that, oh, maybe that's actually pretty attractive. You're right, they are, they're competing essentially for the same thing, which is not the, what we have to offer, which is the 71% of traditional, single-family zoning in the city. So we're missing out, and...
I read a statistic that we have the dubious distinction in the Portland-Vancouver metropolitan area of being the number one most depressed place in the country.
As in emotionally?
Yes, emotionally. And, and from a public health perspective, there's things called root causes. And root causes of, of things like depression and obesity can be, lead back to something as simple as social isolation. And a cottage cluster or a cluster housing model is the antidote to that, and in fact promotes the positive opposite of social isolation, which is social cohesion. And I think about this when I come home and my seven-year-old son is watching his iPad with his headphones on, and I ask him, you know, "Don't you want to go play with your friends?" And, well, he couldn't make a playdate. Well, okay, I couldn't be home to chauffeur him to a playdate. And I, and I wonder, why are we leaving, living in a single-family house? Like, why can't we live in a cluster housing community where he could just step out on the front porch, see whatever kids happen to be out there in the courtyard, and go play with them unstructured without having to make a playdate?
Gosh, that's how I grew up.
That's how I grew up, too. Rode your bike a couple of miles to go to your friends.
And that's what we've gotten so far away from, and that's what communities are trying to get back together to do, you know? And that's why, everything, everything that communities are trying to focus on is really trying to bring us back to 50, 60, 70 years ago because they know that's what works. You know, you live up above your business, you live in clusters, you help each other, your kids go riding their bicycle down the street and nobody has to worry about them, you know? Unfortunately, that's gone right now.
Bridge Meadows earlier, and that's specifically, I mean, that's the model that they do. It's, it's the intergenerational supportive, you know, retired elders supporting foster families is one of their models in, in that type of cluster living.
Highly, it's been, it's been the most effective, if I'm recalling this correctly, most effective model for foster care that anybody's created. It's just been super successful.
You know, it's a really important point, and maybe it's a good one to end on, is that when we originally started this process, we were trying to find nonprofit builders who would be engaged in the, in the project. And they said, "Look, we've got, we have minimum project threshold sizes that we have to allocate resources to because there's a certain economy of scale, and we've looked at cottage clusters before, and there's no code out there that's going to support our model." Right? And so, not because it was, that was sort of, you know, an overriding objective, but they're interested now. And so there's a, there's a model from a physical model perspective, but there's also a new financial, potential financial partner to create those kinds of communities.
That's very cool.
It's exciting.
Great.
What's the timeline?
You tell us.
Yeah, no, for next steps, so we're going to go back to our two groups, discuss the feedback that you've given us, and also share the feedback that we got from the open house because we haven't discussed that with them. We'll do a revised version if necessary and come to you again late May, May 21st. We're scheduled to come back and maybe go into more of the weeds of the actual code proposal. And then after that, June, we would have ready to adopt code for you to approve. So, June, and this is ready to approve, but the approval, I believe, it's going to happen with all the code amendments for our comp plan, which is in, late this year.
So we're going to hold off on this until we roll the whole comp plan out?
Yes.
Oh, really? So we're gonna, you're going to draft code, but it's going to wait for the comp plan?
Um, yes, I believe they want to try to just do it all at once at the end of the year.
Okay. Because it does seem to me there are some pieces, I mean, the comp plan isn't code, right? The comp plan isn't code. So it does seem to me there are some pieces here that might be easy, low-hanging fruit to do, and then some pieces that are more big questions that should wait for the comp plan housing, I guess. And I guess that's sort of what I...
And here's Ann to tell us she does not have planner bandwidth.
Our musical signs. I have not talked to staff about this, so I need a little bit of time. Part of the issue is that these changes are never, ever easy. So we say they're going to be easy, but they're usually a lot of time out of planning commission's hands and also out of yours. We are committed to this. We are working on getting the language, and we've actually talked about the residential section of code being the first one we tackle when we do open up the, the code section. Right now, we're still trying to get to our November 2019 comp plan adoption. Am I just, am I going to say it again? No. With the hope that we will be tackling this in the near. And I know it feels like it's a long way away, but we still have some work to do, and we will be there sooner than you think. While we're working on all that, we are changing the fees. So the fee schedule component will happen in May and then in June, so you'll see a reduction immediately. It won't entirely address this because we've looked at a sliding scale, we've looked at a number of ways to address the frontage improvements. What Kelly was mentioning, though, is actually scheduled into our May discussion study session and then adoption before the June 30th deadline. So some of those easy steps we'll take quickly.
Well, the other piece I'd like to talk more about, and I don't know if it's this process or it's CPAC, but is, you know, what we, what we talked about, it's closer to the beginning, sort of the, what are the tools for keeping things affordable, for keeping things not being short-term rentals, all of those things? What are our, you know, legal tools that we can use for that?
And this is in part why we don't want to rush this one piece out of hand. We want to make sure we're doing this as a part of a total package. We will be entering into budget simultaneously to these regulatory changes, so there's an opportunity for us to start looking at all sides of the coin as we're trying to address these changes. So things like the CET dollars that we talked about before will be an opportunity there. Also opportunities around enforcement. If we do want to increase the amount of short-term rental enforcement, we need to have that discussion, stuff like that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. And I think that once we go through the comp plan process, density has trade-offs, and the trade-offs are green spaces, the trees, probably some choices in solar that are going to be available, and, and it'd be nice to see a cost benefit, not an economic cost benefit analysis, but a, you know, cost benefit analysis, once we get all of that input together to see where those trade-offs really sit and where they are, and before you make specific code.
And that's the important discussion as we're going into the end of the comp plans. So the reason that those last three months are sort of segregated off to the side is so that we can actually look how all of the chapters play together, make sure that all the pieces are in the right parts, and to talk about whether or not we've created inconsistencies within that document accidentally that we can correct before we adopt the document. I would be remiss if I didn't say, there are ways to be creative. Staff is looking for ways to maximize how much we get of all the things we want, so the maximum benefit of the sustainability component and the housing component together. There's just going to be some that we can't, we can't ignore.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. It was really good. And thanks, yes, planning commissioners, thank you for...
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for being here.
Glad you were able to make it.
It's early for us. Late for you. No, 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 late for you, early for us.
We still got...
Not late yet, it will be soon enough.
I thought you watched MTV.
I do. It's on, it's on at home right now.
The dog is watching us.
The dog and my wife are watching.
No, I just put it down. It's not up in the screen. I'm starting to get some throat, I think it was out.
Our next item is the Charragino Farms Annexation Agreement. It's a resolution, so it'll be presented by, apparently, the planning director and Alma, or are you just?
I'm not here.
I'm just trying to get this...
Ignore the woman behind the curtain.
This is just one? Are we ready?
Sure. Go.
Denny Egner, planning director. Two weeks ago, the council met, held a work session on the proposed annexation agreement with the developer of the Charragino Farms subdivision. And there were a couple of questions that councillors had regarding the, the proposal for taxation, or the tax break that we would provide as part of an incentive for annexation, as well as the storm drainage system that was there. The staff report addressed those two points and also highlighted a few changes that I had referenced in the presentation last time, but you hadn't had a chance to see the, the actual language that was there. Today, councillor Beatty also forwarded some questions to me that I'm prepared to answer tonight, one of which was she asked to see a, a site plan and wondered where the flaglots were. And the flaglots are lots 23 down near the detention pond, and then lots 27, 30, 31, 34, and 35. Those are, this is a long, skinny parcel, and, you know, they had trouble designing a, a project that included street frontage for all of those, and this was their, their solution. That was a provision that our code would not have allowed without a variance. So it was just an, an answer to one, to one question. I could just kind of go through some of the, the points you, you had, councillor Beatty, is that okay? Okay. There was a, a question about the, in section C, the recitals, and not having anything in the recitals in part one of the agreement that said that this agreement replaces in full the memorandum of understanding that was signed a year and a half ago. So this would, we would add a few words there that would essentially do that, and we would add them in section C in part one, and actually probably renumber the Cs, the A, B, C, to one, two, and three, because it's the only place within the whole agreement that we used A, B, and C.
I mean, you do have it at the end, but it does seem to me it makes things more clear to say it up front.
Yeah, so, so in, in the, the third one, we would just add the, the word supersedes MOU in its entirety as part of that phrasing. The, I do not think that this project has at this point been submitted to the county for final plat approval, and I tried to make phone calls today to, to confirm that, but there's some, some language in here about the timing and the, and the, when the annexation will, will go into effect. And the idea is that they happen essentially simultaneously, that we would, we would, if we, if we adopt the annexation in advance of the plat recording, then the approval of the annexation would fall to, or the plat would fall to us rather than the county. So we, we want to stage these so that the recording happens and we annex preferably on the same day, you know? And, and that's what I'm trying to, to negotiate and maneuver. And they're getting very close to a point where they will have all their improvements made, which would then allow them to record and sell, to record the final plat and sell properties.
I'm actually surprised they don't do that before they build a bunch of roads.
Yeah.
No, you, you, you need to make all the impro, you have to...
Before you can plat?
Do all the improvements before you can do the final, before you get the final plat recorded, unless you post a bond to guarantee, with the county or the city, to, to guarantee all of those improvements. We typically want to make sure that those, those improvements are made and inspected and complete so that we're not responsible if the developer then walks away. We don't want to be responsible for completing all of those.
Once the plat's recorded, the, it's off to the races, then the lots can be sold and people can start building, so.
So, so there was some phrasing in, in here about that timing, and that was the reasoning.
And so that's what you expect to happen here? He's not going to build all the houses? He's going to sell lots and let people build their own houses?
The developer, the, the sub divider has told us that his family members are the builders.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's hard to say what will happen ultimately. I understand that they have had, they were getting a couple of building permits already from the county. The county allows model homes to be constructed in order to start construction of a few homes, and I believe that was in advance of the...
The plat.
The plat. There were, see, I, there's the, the map with the, with the, the flaglot locations, and you can see where the, the storm drainage pond is.
Oh, that's track day.
Yeah. And it's right along Spring, no, what is the creek? Mount Scott Creek, yeah. I went out today and took a look at it, and it's been planted with the landscaping plans, or the, the plants that were part of the, the proposed, I believe, I mean, I didn't inspect it to make sure every plant had been, been planted, but it was heavily planted. So we, we believe that they're fulfilling that requirement at this point. I wanted to get, I want to get verification from the county, that the county has done all the proper inspections. That's part of what the, the steps would be before we would want to annex and take responsibility for that. So that's one of the, one of the steps that still need to be taken care of. The, again, councillor Beatty, Beatty had a question about the timing of the building permits and if building permits were issued at the county level. And if the county issues a building permit, our assumption is that the county will administer that building permit through the end, even if we annex in between. So there was some confusion about some language that said even after annexation to the city, yes. If the county had started the process, they will continue the process even after annexation. We wouldn't take over the inspection process, is my understanding and my conversation with our building official. The final, the final questions the councillor Beatty had were about the city obligations, number eight, which are about track day and are taking over track day. And it actually raised some other questions for us as, as we looked at this. And one of the things about taking over track day, the interest on the developer's part was that by, by us taking ownership of track day, they would not have to have their homeowners' association be responsible for managing track day and then doing all of that work. So I think it's a lift on our part, and I've talked with Peter Passerelli multiple times today and multiple times before, we brought this to you before, about that, and he's, he recognizes that and is willing to, to maintain the plantings to make sure that they, they take through this time, through the initial time period.
We can't, I mean, typically we make a developer do that. They have to have a bond.
That is correct.
And so we're not asking him to bond for the viability of the plants.
That is what he wanted out of with the county specifically. I mean, I look back at it today and actually tried to, tried to, I didn't get any phone calls back to me today. I called the developer, I called two people at the county, and nobody called me back. But I needed your questions, I needed your questions last week is what I, what I needed.
Well, I mean, I guess, I understand that he doesn't want to have to have an HOA deal with it.
Right.
But I mean, it seems to me that bonding, I mean, I had to put in a bond for the swale that I built at my house. It seems to me bonding is a typical thing a developer has to do.
And under the current conditions that the county placed on this development, they were required to... were required to enter into the normal agreement that they would with Wes to manage that, manage that, the plantings for a year, and then turn over long-term maintenance to Wes. The difference, as far as I can tell, is what they've asked us to do is take over that responsibility. They would be required to do a type of warranty bond to guarantee that the facility itself doesn't fail, like the wall doesn't wash out, or that the pipes fail in some way. So that is something that they would be committed to do for all of the improvements with the county. And we need to explore yet the language that we need to put in here essentially to ensure that when those warranties are made, they're made to both the county and to the city so that that, so we have that assurance that the system won't fail. So we're looking at the, sort of the system there, but the request to us was essentially to take care of those plants for the year and relieve that burden from the developer.
And that's, we think that's reasonable.
We are willing to do it.
I think that is the key term.
Yeah. Well, the Public Works Director has said he's willing to take on that responsibility.
Denny's not going out there with a watering can.
Well, we were, we had that conversation today. He said, he said it may involve, you know, finding a nearby fire hydrant.
No, no, I said you weren't going out there with a watering can.
This guy here? No, he probably won't be the guy doing it. But, you know, it does place an extra burden on us.
And the first year of a planting is far and away the highest maintenance period of time.
The critical one, yep. So I think that, what we're asking for is that we adopt the resolution, that you give the authority to Anne to sign this, and if we come up with something in our final sort of negotiation that is different than what I've talked about, or drastically different, we will return to you. But I think timing is a bit of a question right now, because I wanted to make sure, it's going to take, you know, if they sign, if Anne signs in the next couple of days and they sign in the next couple of days and submit the application, that's what I'm waiting for, is the application for annexation. We've got about, I mean, we can do that in about 30 days. The thing that often hangs us up with the timing for annexations is the getting the Department of Revenue to review the description. And I'm pretty confident that the description is in to the Department of Revenue right now, so we should have that review done very soon. And that's way different than what happened with the college, where that got delayed just because we put the wrong criteria down on, in the initial staff report, and the county said, you guys can't annex this under this criteria without our, without our approval. And I had to, I had to pull it and fix it.
We had some people here for that, too.
We're going to be okay, we'll be okay on that one when it comes back in a month.
So the 62 days was just-
We just put in-
Pick a number?
We put in two months.
A generous number.
And they put in 62 days. I think it's more like, I mean, my goal is 30 days. It's not 60 days.
And the plat recording at the county, how long does that kind of thing take?
Basically, they have to make sure that all of the conditions of the preliminary approval have been satisfied. There are pages of conditions. I was hoping to get a sense from the county staff today how close they are. And that was my question with the engineer as well. So I know there are a few things that are probably, that are still outstanding, but I don't know when they hope to have it tied up.
Can I sign it?
I feel like, I feel like, I feel like some of my answers are really inadequate, given I've had this for two weeks, but I, I-
Well, I only asked the questions at 1 o'clock this morning, so-
It brought up, it brought up, it did bring up a few other things that were like, oh yeah, we could have an answer to that.
I just know that whenever the tax increases start jumping, you know, we're going to get, because this agreement, it's, you know, it's number four under, you know, the developer's obligations, we'll provide a copy of this agreement, and you know it's going to be in a stack of papers this thick, and it's going to be somewhere in the middle. And so-
Yeah.
Future council, sorry that we just put that on-
At least there's seven, at least there's seven small steps instead of one, you know? I mean, it increases slowly at least.
That's not going to, yeah, I mean, it's going to go from like-
Well, I mean, when you buy a house, don't you know?
Most people don't pay attention to this.
Don't you know what? That your taxes are going to increase by-
I mean, like, when you look, well, when you look at an RMLS listing or whatever, it tells you what city, and it tells you, I mean-
But this is going to be zero at the time of purchase.
Right, right. Well, for the first-
It's just going to, it's going to, it's going to, we're going to hear-
It is going to come up, but.
They'd be seen as a benefit by a lot of buyers, like, oh, I've got time to-
If they know that it's there at all.
I want to, I do, I do want to explain that, that number a little bit. They had, they had presented to us that we had cost them about $30,000. And by shifting the savings forward, it was basically providing some tax savings to the developer while he held the land. And it was, it wasn't quite $30,000 in savings for him at that, in that timeframe, but that was the, that was the model. That's how we ended up with that. And it, but it allowed us then to, to start the phase in more quickly, which ends up in the end, and I didn't have this information two weeks ago, we end up collecting about 5% less with that shift, which last week I said I thought it was about a wash, or two weeks ago I said it was about a wash. 5% is a significant amount still, but it's not-
Nothing.
It's not nothing, which is what we would get if they didn't annex.
If we didn't annex, then we wouldn't have anything.
Right.
Ever.
So it's, this whole thing is gross, and it's been gross from the get-go.
Yeah, so I just have to say-
Need to work with the county to make this not ever happen again.
Yeah, well, and I, this was not on my watch. I'm coming in, I'm not going to stand in the way, but I don't like this deal at all. And I know that there's interest in the council to close up holes, and I understand the reasoning for that, but I don't, it just does not sit well with me.
No.
So I'm just going to say that.
It's definitely going to hold your nose kind of a deal.
You've been doing that the whole time.
Yeah. I just, I haven't had a chance to say that yet, so I've said it. Now I'm good.
And I think we probably want to have that long-term conversation. We are continuing dialogues, Jess and I are continuing dialogues with other cities to better understand annexation policies in the broader community. But I would love to know from you all in the coming months whether or not we want to go through this again. Well, because we, if, the alternative may be, if we, if we don't go through this without a policy change at the state, we may not be able to annex. And so we went through this process thinking that annexation was the priority.
Yeah, no, it's okay. With the amount of time that it's spent, you know, I mean, I guess my initial, my knee-jerk reaction is, you know, no. And if we're, if we're going to, then, you know, then are we, are we getting to a point where we're almost spending, are we going to be spending as much time on it individually, where we could be having a bigger, broader conversation about annexation, which we said we're not going to, you know, we weren't going to put it on our goals for the next two years, but maybe in a couple of years it's back on the goal list?
We, when we were looking at this, only had a couple of parcels where I was told by the past council that this would be a priority if they were to possibly come in. This was one of those parcels, which is why we jumped through the hoops. I don't expect that most of those other options are going to come through on a monthly basis, but if they did, then we would come back and have the discussion about whether or not this is the time to change the goal.
This, this property helps to create an island-
Yeah.
-that would present the opportunity for an island annexation at some point.
I just, I also-
It's a full island, but it gets a lot of it.
And I think, I mean, I'm with you on holding your nose on this deal, but I do think that annexing this, annexing the college, having some sort of announcement about annexations, about people coming into the city, I mean, I think it, I think there's some value in just the, like, oh, look at that, people are, are becoming part of Milwaukee and, you know, tying it up with, say, I mean, I do think when we get more safe projects built, when we get Linwood in particular, because that is the edge of that area, then we have some things to show that people are, you know, maybe, you know, a new library, more sidewalks, more things that make Milwaukee-
They can use the library, well, then-
Yeah, they can. Yes, they can.
They have to pay for it.
Thank you.
You'll just have to pay a toll to get there.
Yeah, we should. Toll booth set our borders.
There you go.
Can I get a general yes, I can sign?
There's a motion.
There's an actual formal motion.
I would move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an annexation agreement for the Charrigan Farms subdivision.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an annexation agreement for the Charrigan Farms subdivision. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Good job.
Thank you, I think.
Thank you, Denny.
All right, now we're going to talk about the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner.
Yes, sir. Most of the staff report was, that you read was just an update from our last discussion. We heard to go ahead last time to reserve the Milwaukee Sonic Lodge and to lock down a caterer, which have been done. We've started working on some of the other elements of the project, and we came to a realization that, which is the walking tour primarily, which we need further direction from council on. Before I get any farther than that, I want to also mention that we were looking at staffing and who's going to be present, and Ms. Ober and Ms. Brooks will be absent from the city on the date of our fourth Thursday in June for this event. And I also want to take my opportunity, are all five members of council planning to be in, attending at this event?
I may not be available. I had a prior commitment.
Okay.
I would say 80% probability.
The reason that we're asking is because the tours are partially going to be led by councillors, so we're trying to make sure that we match those correctly.
Yeah, that's what I was-
Tours or tour?
That's why we're talking.
There's three tour plans.
I mean, I had a, there, well, I think it's, yeah, two tours at most, probably, but, yeah, I mean, I said to Scott today that I thought he and his staff didn't have to sweat the tours so much because, you know, it's all, it's Leila for South Downtown, and it's Kelly and maybe NCPRD for the riverfront with a couple of councillors planning the tour.
Kelly will not be there. Oh, Kelly won't be there, so we'll have to have-
More staff time, yeah. I mean, you know, we've got to, we've got to consider our staff time.
Well, what I'm saying is it doesn't need to be a staff burden. It can be our burden to plan the tours. You know, I mean, in consultation with staff, but I mean, you know, I think we're capable of planning the routing a tour and figuring out what we want to say.
Get Greg Eimer, he could do it.
Not that kind of a tour.
Will he do it in period costume?
Probably.
Yes. Greg and I are there.
Greg, if you're watching.
So, working backwards, we know we're going to end and have dinner at the lodge. We know there's going to be a presentation by community development staff. What's in the presentation depends perhaps on what the tour hits and what doesn't hit, and what we want to emphasize around the city outside of downtown or in downtown. So we're at the tour, back and working backwards. We know it ends at the lodge. We would like direction from council as to where it starts. The staff recommendation, as you saw in the staff report, remains the simplest course of action. I don't know if that's the right word, but starting and stopping at the same point is helpful for your visitors coming to town. Parking options in this end might be a little more available, but that remains our recommendation. But we did, Alma did speak to Mr. Johnson, Johnson Group, and the pod, cart pods aren't against it. There's consideration that needs to be made if we're going to be starting at the pods and inviting them to have a drink and then walk around town. They can't obviously have open containers when they're walking around town. So if you have 30 minutes on-site enjoying the food carts, and the food carts, he admitted to us that they are be open to working with us on that, but then that eats into the tour time, which then eats into when you get back to dinner, and then the develop, I mean, there's a few things that start backing up on you if you're going to spend time there. So staff would like to know, does council want to start at the food cart pods or the lodge? And then a sub-question is if we're starting at the food cart pods, are we just meeting there and being the starting point to talk about it, or are we wanting to do programming there?
Well, and, and I'd be interested in knowing in the conversation with Mr. Johnson, is that his name? If there's an expectation that, oh, the food cart, card pots, I can't ever say that correctly.
Food carts.
Food carts are supportive of it because they have this influx of people that there's an assumption people are going to be buying something, and that is not the factor for that evening, you know?
Unless we buy a, you know, we contract with some of them for some appetizers, and then, and then the La Tap does the cash bar, which is what most of the, most of the dinners have a cash bar, you know? LO didn't, had a-
A nice bar.
Yes.
A host bar.
And we are still planning on having a bar at the dinner as well, so people can buy alcohol if they want to.
Caterer will have it there.
So, I mean, you know.
We, we're happy to-
Personally, I'd like to keep it as simple as possible, but, you know, have it include what needs to be included, especially given that we're going to be minus some key staff that night, and it, you know, it puts the onus on the other staff to, you know, help make sure all that happens or whatever, and I, you know, I, I just want to be conscious of-
Well, and if, if indeed-
Staff burden.
Councilors are going to be taking on a leadership role in designing and leading the tour, then that is also a factor. And I'm, I'm speaking sort of in the third person here, because I really don't expect to be here, to be part of that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the, I do hear that it's going to be a rushed gathering if we start at the food cart pods. I'm, I mean, I think the staff has to be wherever people start, right? So they have to be there to sign people in and give them their name tags or whatever. You know, we don't need a lot of staff. If we started at the food cart pods, we don't need a lot of staff back at the lodge. We need maybe one person there working with the caterer.
I think some people will still come to the lodge and the food cart-
Well, and so that's why you need a person.
Yeah.
That's why you need a person there, but-
We'll need that, just so you know, we'll need the same roles at both locations. So we'll need people doing sign-in, name badges, coats, whatever that may be.
Well, you can't have name badges.
Not coats.
Hopefully not your coats. For both locations because we will have people who don't want to go on the tour. So we'll just, just so everybody knows, it's probably two people at both locations. In the past, we've had four people typically doing sign-in.
Well, so I don't remember if LO requested for, I mean, did they want to know in advance who was going on, who was planning to come to the tour?
They did not, because they did it at the end of the night, so it was basically a first-come, first-served.
I guess I'm thinking not this-
Oh, not this time. I'm not sure about the time.
When they did the downtown development tour.
Downtown, I feel like they requested-
Yeah.
I think they may have, and I think Oregon City, when they've done their jet boat tour, and that's a little more involved.
Well, that, you know.
But, I think it's not been unusual to ask for that.
So the name tag thing might not be that, if we can ask in advance, then the name tag thing might not be that big of a deal, because we'll know who's planning to come to the tour and who's planning on going directly to the lodge.
We'll just need, the staffing, so when we walked into the Laco event, we had three, this time, we had three people standing at a table doing name tags, checking as people are walking through. It's not the end of the world. It's not incredibly difficult. It's just a statement of, we're going to have to have a couple of people at both locations if we do it in two locations.
We're not going to have name badges for everybody at each location, so you've got to think about where they get their name badges.
We could. Just having them write them.
Then you have to do them twice.
We could figure that.
You just write them.
I mean, a lot of people are bringing their own anyway.
When we did these for, when we've done these in the past at the Bob's, we've done nice name badges, and we've actually collected them at the end of the night, so they actually have all the-
We can figure that part out.
So is there, I don't know why this didn't occur to me before, but is there a reason we're not doing the tour after?
we're not doing the tour after? It's June. It's going to be light until ten o'clock at night and this would address the, the problem of starting point and you could still swing by the food carts if you wanted to.
I would guess it's potentially a little inertia, but if I recall, dinner has historically started to flow to at six forty-five, so dinner eating has been typically at seven with the panel discussion starting, but that's probably just how we ended up with. Because you're going to get people.
It's been all over the map, I think, really.
And where, yeah, I, I think, I think you could, I agree, you could get away with doing the tour at the end and I think that would.
It would alleviate a lot.
Simplify a lot of things if we just start at the Mason's Lodge, have a drink, do the dinner, do the presentation, do the tour.
I love it. It would actually help us a lot. The end of night stuff for the staff is pretty minimal. It's just collecting any of the handouts that aren't used.
What we might want to find out ahead of time in the invitation is how many people would be interested or, you know, would plan to go on the tour after the dinner and presentation? Because they'll hear a little bit about it and hopefully that will whet their appetites.
Yeah, and I think.
Take a couple of different tours.
Well, and I think even though Lo did a tour that was basically onsite for this last dinner, they still asked if people were interested in advance. They got a sense.
My only concern is that, so it sort of gets rid of the, you know, the happy hour at the food par, you know, the food carts, which I just, you know, I just really liked. I don't, I mean, I, you know, it's, it's one thing to walk by the food cart and point out the food cart. It's quite another to actually engage with it. So I think that we, we will eliminate that as an option. We will just simply be walking by it and pointing at it. So I don't think that we get the engagement and I think that there's no reason for them to stay open late if.
Right.
That's all we're doing. And then at that point, it's not really all that impressive.
Well, it'll be.
There's a food carts that are closed.
It's, I hope that the food carts will stay open during daylight hours in the summertime. That would really be nice.
I mean, at eight thirty or nine, yeah, no, I wouldn't count on that, but, I mean, I'm with you. I liked the, starting at the food cart pods, but I do also, in addition to the other complications, I do think the parking becomes complicated because if we're parking them over here, you know, and then wanting them to walk down there and making sure they get to the right place and, you know, and there's not, there's some parking down there, but there's not a lot and then, you know, yeah.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing a consensus for flipping, starting at the lodge, doing the abbreviated happy hour, then the dinner and the presentation, and then we'd have to work out the timing, but seven thirty-ish, start tours?
Oh, seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Don't you think? We usually, people are antsy to get out of there.
Well, it depends what time you're going to have people gather. It's usually around.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Dinner at six.
Six to six thirty is dinner, six, by six thirty if not before presentation started, and then by seven, going out the door.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll fit in there, time-wise, yeah.
And so that means the tours are starting and stopping at the lodge, and that means that we will develop, and whether council leads it, I think we certainly have, the three starts, or three examples in the packet were examples. We didn't have the end and start points, but now we have that, lodge, lodge. So I think we can go back and tailor two versions. One goes by the park, one goes, does some of the other stuff, because we got the first questions answered. Is there any?
Frankly, you can do, you can combine, this is the tour I've done now.
Yeah.
Twenty times.
You can do it in one tour group, go one way, one go the other.
Well, if you want to break it up into two, you could, but you can come out of the food cart pods under the bridge and then go down Washington. I've even crossed over into the park, although that's like herding cats trying to get thirty people.
Oh, I think it's important to cross into the park.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
That's, so, because there's really nothing from Washington to Harrison on the Harrison leg, so you could cross over into the park, do the park, come back up across Harrison.
So one, one route, maybe two groups going.
Opposite directions.
Opposite directions.
Yeah.
One route with the park.
I would, I would submit that you could consider using inner tubes and going under.
Go off the dam.
Over the dam?
Off the dam? Oh, that would be a memorable.
If the goal is to really remember this tour?
You'll need a liability waiver.
Just give it.
You're such a killjoy. So in your, what are, what are you kind of rev, I guess?
So you're coming, you're coming down, around, you talk about that, and you drop down, cross the park, and come back up Harrison.
Okay, so we're, are we?
Or go the opposite direction.
Yeah, you can do it all in one loop and just.
I don't want to skip the library. I mean, one of these options.
We'll have, we'll have.
It's real close. We can make sure it's on the tour.
Start there or finish there.
One starts there, one starts going down towards the river.
Ideally, are you comfortable if we have one council member or two, however many are there, plus one staff person doing both directions, just so that you guys can answer all the questions as they come up? Then we'll plan on doing those routes that way.
Okay.
Cool.
I think that's everything. Well, I think we'll plan to come back before the event.
The beauty of having it at the end, frankly, is if people start the tour and they don't want to do the whole thing.
They go to the wine spa.
Yeah, or they go get in their car, you know?
Or they can stop at the.
Or they stay in the head of pod.
Right, they stay there.
Or they go to the beer store.
Whatever.
Yeah.
We've got options.
Great. Thank you.
Exactly.
Are we doing legislative updates?
Kelly's here. That's what she's here for.
Oh, she's here because she likes hanging out with us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she would be here anyway. Yeah, sure.
She's really excited for them.
Thank you, Alma.
Yeah, I bet she is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I have a very basic slideshow that I didn't give to Scott in advance. Okay, and also just a small, a small warning. I have two children who are under my desk in my office and if for some reason my husband comes to pick them up, they're probably going to wave at one of you if you could let them in to go get them.
I thought you meant under there and I was really impressed how quiet they had been all this time.
They're back there. They're back there. They're pretty, they're pretty content.
Bless their hearts.
Yeah, we have, yeah, logistics, but they're doing fine. So I was going to start with a quick regional check-in. So the first thing, just because tomorrow is the C4 Metro Subcommittee, and I know they're going to be asking about the T2020 project list, so just a refresher, that's the Metro Transportation Bond Measure. The mayor sits on that committee and has been going through a wonderful process of identifying the corridors that will be selected. So they pick the corridors and then they go to projects after that. And I chatted with the mayor yesterday, right, when you were trying to get it in, so congratulations on getting it in prior to the deadline.
One minute.
And I think that I have mostly reconstructed the list, but there's one I just can't remember. So who all, who's going in the morning, I guess?
The boss.
The three of you? Okay. So I mainly am passing this out so the three of you have it. You can decide, we were going to get asked in the morning. They asked me for it today, what the list was. So this is just for you to have it and then for me to ask you what that last one is.
Good, then you and I were on the phone then when I did it, because I didn't record it anywhere. I just did it.
So, I think I got it. But they are asking, what they'll ask tomorrow is what was the top five and then what was the total list of fifteen? And the mayor's list combines both, the counties had compiled a priority list based on what the cities and the county had been talking through, and then the mayor had been working through a list with some of the folks that have been representing climate on, on the committee, and so it's sort of a blending of those two lists is what you have before you. And so I think, Mayor, if you could tell me just, after you've scanned it, what I got wrong?
What we missed?
Because I mainly, because I know I'm missing one and, and it's that last one, but I also may have just fucked something up. I think that there was, I couldn't remember whether you had C to C in, in the bottom ten and then Highway forty-three up top. I think the Highway forty-three was in your, in the top five.
I think so too. What I'm thinking probably we missed was something that had two segments.
So I've got the two segments of MLK. I only included one segment of Burnside.
Right. Do you have, didn't we have Powell?
I didn't.
Have Powell.
I didn't have Powell, but you may have. I didn't have Powell on there, but that, again, I'm, there's one I just don't have, so. And then while you're looking at it, just for the rest of you, the things that we talked about being priorities are reflected on here. So ninety-nine E is on the list. Two twenty-four, I have officially said, we're not pushing that anymore. So with staff, and it's not on here and we're okay with that. And then as a broader Clackamas County objective, the Oglo Bridge is, is here. So those are the two things that we've talked about.
I've never seen Oglo before. I guess it's better than Lug.
I don't know any better, so that's what I've heard, so that's what I call it. Is that wrong? Okay.
Calling it a two twenty.
So you, think of, you don't have to answer me.
Hopefully it doesn't stick.
We can move on to the other things and you can keep thinking.
This is the C4's priorities or this is?
My, so each person who sits on the task force is asked to do, to do two lists, one was the fifteen out of seventy-eight, seventy-nine, however many there were, and then your top five out of those fifteen.
Fifteen, I got it.
And so Clackamas County kind of did their version of that. I was working with people in the sort of climate, transit, bike ped realm where they were concentrating, and this is kind of a melding of the two, because I, you know, obviously one of our two big goals is climate, so if, I felt like our list needed to represent.
Just so everyone knows, the mayor is not actually representing the city on this committee. So he is representing, he was requested by Metro to participate, and so for that reason, there wasn't a prioritizing of this body or of even C4. Okay, just making sure everybody knows.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it because I know you all will be at the meeting in the morning and I wanted you to have.
Thank you.
The information.
And I'm, obviously I'm always open to input that's.
Yeah, well, you might, like I said, you might want to come to the county's Economic Development Commission next week too, or somebody else might, I mean, I'll be there, but, because we're going to hear a presentation that day from David Nielsen, who's also on the T2020 task force, and he's on our EDC, and he thinks that by then they will have selected the top one, the top corridors.
No. No, we will not have selected the top corridor. So the way this, this is a crazy, when she, she said wonderful process or whatever, there was a lot of irony missed. It's a crazy process and it's a radically uninformed process. And several of us pushed back at the meeting. I think all they're trying to do is say, okay, out of these eighty projects, are there any that nobody really cares about? Let's get those off the table for starters. Are there any that everybody cares about? Then we know, yep, those are definitely going to be in the process, right? And then all the ones in between, then they're going to go through a second process where they're going to start talking about actual projects, because these are just corridors. We weren't given any information as to, this is an improvement in the bus line, or this is a, in a bike path, or this is a, this is undergrounding light rail through downtown. Downtown is a cor, downtown Portland, that's a corridor. How many blocks of, yeah, exactly.
And so you're meeting tomorrow, you're, you think you're going to come up with a shorter than seventy list? That's what they're trying to do?
No, this C4 Metro Subcommittee is just, the Clackamas County having the conversation about how do we, you know, move the process along. The next meeting, the Metro staff will have gelled all of the answers that we all provided and presumably thrown some out, top priorities, and then, there'll probably be a ranking.
It's just putting everybody's priorities in a matrix and saying, gee, this came up and this didn't.
This one got twenty-two votes, this one got nine votes, this one got none.
And they do, to, I mean, to, it is a, is a big lift and the staff at Metro are doing what they can to try to wrangle all these different concepts together. So this is the process and I, is to try to get you to think about what corridors you care about first before you think about the solutions on those corridors. So that's, that's why it goes corridors, then projects. Okay, well, why don't you look, if you think of what that other one is while we're talking?
I'll probably have to look at my lists, my highlighted.
That's fine. And at this point, you all are walking into the meeting at seven thirty, not me, so it's you that will get asked, so it's, it's, that's, that's your list.
I wish you were going to walk in.
That's the list you got.
Not going to see that.
Okay, the next item is we were requested at C4, and Counselor Heisey, thank you for your wonderful summary of the request, if there was something that the city could do to help show the benefit of vehicle registration fee to, to us. And so we talked about it, I've talked it over with Scott. We think, we are still within the window of where we could put something forward in the May pilot. This is essentially the letter, I'm going to, this is a letter draft, and I will take this letter, some version of it, and I will send it down to the Secretary of State tomorrow and just check with Scott's guidance, just to make sure there's nothing that runs afoul of any election and issue. He doesn't expect based, that there would be based on our preliminary conversation, but we're going to do it just to be sure. This is essentially the letter that you all drafted and sent in support of the VRF with one adjustment, because their request was, can you get into more specifics around projects? And the project I've been sort of settling on, based on the conversations I've had at this table and the emails I get, that would be good to showcase as a potential place to use some of this resource, is Lake Road. So we've talked, we have a project program for Lake, but it's not what everyone really wants. It's not the full deal. And there's a potential for Lake in this arena where we could pave, do more of the rebuild of the roadway and talk jurisdictional transfer or do other things. So I've picked that one as an example. This letter is not written in a way, and I firmly don't want to write it in a way that says we're absolutely committed, because I don't, because we don't have a great cost estimate on that right at this moment, but I do think it's a good showcase of what we, of why this is helpful to us and a place that we could spend these kind of dollars. So that's what I put it in there, is just an example of something that you could do.
Why do we care what the elections people think? This is not going before.
So the issue right now is that there is a petition afoot?
Died.
It did. There's a second.
There's a second one.
The second one.
Yeah. So this came back and we are expecting that it, it is possible, up to probable, that this could end up on a ballot. My request to staff was, until that it hits the ballot, we are fine. And even if it hits the ballot, we're okay, as long as we stick to purely educational. So we are, we're just trying to make sure that because we published the pilot and then it's mailed and we don't know when the petition would come in, that we're just staying on top of this correctly.
We think we can, but we just want to make sure, so that we're all covered. And so my request, I guess, for you all tonight is, based on the overall support you've already signed on to in terms of the VRF and that it would benefit the city, I think you're all good there. It's, is my project example acceptable to you all is the second question, and then my third one is, and I'm kind of looking at you, Counselor Beatty, because you like, you're a night owl and you're good at editing things. If you look at this tonight and have suggestions about how it could be better, I would love to have them. I'll look at it with a fresh set of eyes in the morning, but if you have any ideas for me, I will, I would, I mean, you're a great editor too. Everyone's actually great, but if you guys have ideas, I just know you, you stay up late sometimes and read things, so if you do that tonight and want to give me any suggestions, I can take that and then do the Secretary of State review, just to belt and suspender it.
This is just a pilot, I mean, it's not under somebody's signature, it's just a pilot?
I was just going to do as a pilot, a pilot article, just as an example.
Twenty-first is kind of perfect because a chunk of that is County Road and we'll be looking to get that transferred and have a process. There's a segment of the funds that are set aside for that very kind of thing, so it's really pretty perfect.
Yeah, I think it, it does what we needed to do to drive home the point that this is a good thing.
And there's a lot of people who care about Lake Road.
Yeah.
Can I make a, just a really?
Please.
Go ahead. If, are you going to work on this? Like, when, when do we need this?
I was going to send it in tomorrow. I have another day if I need to, but.
I've got some suggestions on language, so.
I would love your suggestions too.
Team on, I'm, I'm, you're a night owl and it's sort of like.
Please, I, really feel free. That's why I gave you the text, so that you could, yeah.
Sure, okay. And can you send me an electronic? Oh, yes, that would be better.
Just send the electronic version to both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else want to look at it? Well, actually, I think I can only do two.
I would be sleeping.
All right, good. Okay, that takes it, that's, we're not, we're done with that. Session dates, we...
Oh, so I, yeah, just wanted to make sure I understood. So do we know how, how long they have to collect signatures?
I think the 21st of, I think it's May 21st is the deadline for the signatures.
Okay.
So we should expect them to be at the farmer's market collecting signatures?
We know who initiated it.
When we talked to Commissioner Bernard, he was expecting that.
Yeah.
And I will say that the, the general appeal at C4 was, please educate the, the community members as you see fit, and we will provide you with all of these resources. And there are videos online that you can use, and JLA is putting together a whole suite of materials that we can use to help people understand why this VRF is really something that benefits Milwaukee folks.
Do you have a link for that? Can you send me a link for that?
I probably do.
We do, I can send it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I owe you all a draft and a link to the...
Counties.
The county stuff.
And Justin's editing it for fun right now.
And Justin's editing it right now.
Everyone's going to...
So many editors. Okay. All right, so here are, the session dates, just a reminder, we've passed the, there was a major deadline last week in terms of when you would had to have had a work session. So the next major deadline is May 10th. Okay, here's the items we talked about last time, that I'm just kind of doing a running, running check-in on. So first is HB 2001. It was voted out of the Policy Committee and is headed over to Ways and Means. The SDC language is different, and now it resembles what we were looking at in terms of, it's, it's a thing you can do. You can waive SDCs, it's an option that you can consider to help incentivize housing, but it doesn't have the language that was problematic before, which is a good thing.
What about the bill, building, what was it, occupancy?
That, it took it out. If I read it correctly, I mean, it took that out, and it just said, you can waive SDCs, and among other things that cities can do to incentivize housing. I can pull it up if you want to actually look at it.
I thought that whole sentence was removed.
Yeah.
Gone, oh.
Yeah. It did, it was, I think, City of Ben's recommendation, and they took it, which is good. Okay, the diesel bill's still alive. It's been referred to Ways and Means and Rules. Cap and Trade, the work session was canceled, but it's still alive, which I know, thanks to the Thorn Run update that the mayor sent around. I have copies of that, if anybody would actually like a hard copy of it. But it's really helpful this time, not that they haven't been helpful in the past, but this Thorn Run update is one to actually read, because it goes through what's dead and what's alive. The Happy Valley bill did pass out of committee. It was also amended. So what they did is, there's more language in there now about, it provides a 90-day clock for establishing a timeline for disposition of assets. So it's, it's moving ahead at this point. And then...
Who controls that clock?
It's in the amendment that I can pull up, but it's, it's basically that the city, the city can petition to the Circuit Court. It like, it creates a pathway to the Circuit Court to, to rule on the disposition of assets within 90 days. You want to say anything else about that?
We've had a couple of conversations with Representative Power. She is watching this just to make sure that the city of Milwaukee is not harmed. And so she and I are talking regularly, is, and when she can't make it to hearings, she's sending one of her staff people, just to make sure that we're all on top of it.
Cool.
And then this one, I actually just brought, I sent you all an email earlier. Their, C4 had a couple priorities. One of them was to do a transportation futures study, which is a super, super long-range transportation visioning type plan, and they were going to request 2.5 million to do it. Washington County did something similar a couple sessions ago. Right now, it's sort of in search of a city to put that forward. I don't know that it needs to be us. We don't have a competing funding ask right now, so the county asked if we would consider doing it. I don't know what all the cities were hoping would come from a transportation futures study. And if we felt particularly passionate about doing that kind of a study, it's certainly not something we have to do. I would put it in the something we would do to be nice category.
So they're not just asking us to support something they've already asked for? They're asking us to be the...
We would put it in, I think they've mentioned, they've definitely included in their legislative priorities. But I think what they've got right now is folks that, you know, they've got courthouse funding on their list, you know, Wilsonville has different funding opportunities, Happy Valley's clearly kind of busy. So it's, it's to have one city kind of raise their hand and say, this is something that we want.
Some of this stems from the push that Mayor Knapp and I and Mayor Axelrod have been making to, we were trying to make it happen before a bond measure was floated. Our concept was that, have we really thought about what the next 100 years of transportation, or even the next 50 years of transportation will look like? Do we really want to spend $20 billion and then build things that aren't going to necessarily mesh with what we need to be doing? And so that's where, that was the conversation that this stemmed out of. It feels like something that should be happening region-wide, I think. All the mayors think that. It's not going to. Metro feels like they're, what do they call it, the 2040 Plan or the...
Yeah, I would say that, so they've got the 2040 Vision, which is sort of their big longer-range blueprint, and then they do the RTP, which is a long-range planning document as well. So I, I mean, my, my background on the Washington County Transportation Futures Study really came from the West Side Bypass and not really know what to know, need, not knowing what to do in a post-West Side Bypass world. And so there'd been legislation afoot to kind of resurrect the West Side Bypass that was not particularly looked favorably upon by then, Transportation Advisor to the Governor Lynn Peterson. And so they, they crafted this study to try to come up with, what, what can we look at? What kind of corridor do we need in Washington County? So that was the West Side story. The, this version is, I, I do remember it being sort of about feeding into a bond conversation, which we're in the midst of now. But I also know that in that bond conversation, issues have continued to pop up, like maybe you should have transit on this particular bridge. And, you know, it does provide an opportunity to have those kind of things vetted a little bit. It's also a big ask. It would be a big deal for us to say, yeah, sure, we think that you should give the county, you know, give us 2.5 million dollars to do this long-range visioning plan. So that's where, I mean, I'm doing a little bit of a gut test here. Like, is it a good idea that we actually want to say, it's a great idea, and we think someone should fund it? Or we say, hey, it was a good idea, but we're farther along in this bonding conversation now, so maybe it's not ripe anymore.
And what came of the West Side one? It was 2013.
They did, actually. So I would really give a shout out to Washington County Staffperson Chris Defabak, who took that on and ran a pretty great process. I would say it's similar to some of the conversations you all have been having, like the one you just had on SDCs, and kind of comp plan and long-range planning, and thinking about where you want to go, and what our assumptions are, and where do we think we'll be with autonomous vehicles, and, you know, it's, you know, the sky's kind of the limit. So they, it did help them sort of guide, guide their county in a direction, and put some things to bed that probably needed to be put to bed, I think.
And for, I think for Washington County, it's more, it's even more relevant, because they actually have funds to spend on transportation.
Right, right.
I mean, we're, we're scrambling to try and protect this ridiculous little increase in the registration fee.
So what's the cost for, I mean, you know, we, we put up our hands, we say, we want the county to do this. We're not saying we're going to do it, right?
No, we wouldn't do it. It would be, if we had a competing funding ask, I would say, no, thank you. Because I already got an ask in for $2 million for X, and so, no. But we actually don't right now, so I think that's the risk, is that we, we would have something that would be a higher priority for us, that's a funding ask, and then we would have asked for this instead.
I was going to ask that question. Is there kind of a...
Sliding scale.
A length of time, oh, no, you guys got your $2 million three years ago.
I think it's this session. I mean, I think it's just, it's, it's this session. It's like last session, Representative Power was awesome, and helped get funding for the library. We don't have an ask like that this time, so...
Couldn't we ask for more money for the library?
Yeah.
Sure, that would go over, right? But I don't have it asked.
So I see, and you're wanting to jump in, but I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, but...
I just want to remind people, we don't have a state legislative government affairs team. So if we say yes to this, what we're doing is we're submitting a letter.
Yeah.
That's it. There's no, and there is some risk in that. If we submit the letter, there will be people calling and asking us if we want to come testify, and if we want to talk about funding, and we don't have that capacity. So I just want to make sure everybody knows what this is and what it is.
I mean, and isn't it transparent that we're doing the county's bidding?
Well, I think this is the county testing. I think they felt like they added this to the list for the cities. And right now, they don't have a city saying, we actually still want this. So they're kind of calling it out, and saying, do you...
Calling our bluff.
Do you really want this thing? And if you really want it, ask for it, I think. So...
When do we need a decision on that?
Oh, not right now. I mean, by the time, you know, I think in a, if we wait more than a couple weeks, it's probably too late.
Unfortunately, you don't have another meeting.
So we'll bring it up at C4 tomorrow morning.
Yeah, just, just ask. And I think, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. It's, I think it's a reasonable request to make. It may not be ripe anymore, and we're just, how passionately do you guys have been in these conversations? How do you feel about it? And do you want, is it worth saving? So, that's it.
We are three weeks out from the next council meeting, though. So if you want to take a vote, this is sort of your shot, because we have a bye. We go all the way till May 7th and before the next meeting.
So is there any risk to us in terms of, we say, yeah, we want it, and then the county drops the ball? Or we look, we take egg because the county doesn't do something, or...
Always, but I'm not worried. I mean, that's, wouldn't keep me up at night.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, Besner, those guys are good.
Yeah, they're good.
It's a good team. I think if they get the, what is it, they asking 2.5?
Yep.
If they get the 2.5, they'll run a protest.
They'll do it.
We have real problems.
And like Karen, and yeah, I don't know if you all know Karen Birick, but she's a planner over the county. She's top-notch, and I'm pretty sure this would end up with her. So I don't have worry about how they would go about the plan.
You know, I, I still think it's a thing that should be done. I just think we're doing things out of order now.
Yeah. So I'm happy to vote to, you know, support it if you guys come out of the C4 meeting tomorrow, thinking we should support it. I mean, I would defer to your, your judgment on that.
Okay.
And I appreciate that we have a lag time, and that may be a lag time that the county then has to live with. But I would actually feel better about that if you talk about it with other cities tomorrow, and just get a sense of how, it is a big, it is, it would, it's a lot to ask for. So let's just make sure everybody really still wants it.
Let me remember.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah.
One thing I will do tomorrow.
That's my whole list.
Okay, the bill that was, there were two bills, but one was all the cities were going to get to use it. The one where we get to set our own speed limit?
Oh, so, in the Thorn Run report.
I didn't even read it.
They said it was dead.
The Senate bill's dead, and I meant to go...
Good one, right?
Uh, it was, but then they were amending the House bill.
So they're gutting and stuffing the House bill?
I think they might all be dead now. But I didn't have a chance to go check on the House bill. I can check the House bill.
Okay.
But the Senate bill's dead, according to your, your report.
Yeah, I saw that.
But I, I'm not too surprised, because they were kind of all heading towards this big rulemaking process, looking at speeds, when they, when I watched that one hearing. But the Senate, the Senate vehicle's dead, but I need to go confirm the House, what's happening with the House. And I can send an email out about that tomorrow.
What about the firearms? I can't remember what the...
Firearms. So we did get the letter in, so thank you for writing that. And it, I think it's still moving.
Do you remember the number?
Uh-huh.
If you Google, if you go on OLS and say firearms, it gives you like 15.
Well, I don't remember the number, I would say it. But I have it on my computer, hold on.
Oh, maybe we didn't put a number, because they were gutting and stuffing, and...
Different things.
Yeah, we probably didn't put a number.
We didn't, but it had a number, and it was like 938, I think.
There's 978.
Maybe that was it.
That's police.
Oh, the only other thing I think you probably should know, is that the governor did release her PERS proposal.
Yes, teachers are very happy about it.
Teachers are mad, everybody's mad. The league has asked, and I'm not prepared to ask you all to do this tonight, so I don't bring anything for you, but I, the league is taking the position that they are not happy that it only addresses education, that there's no fix for local governments at all. So I'm not super surprised that that's how it came out, but that's the league's official position right now, is that cities, if you wanted to weigh in, that the, the request would be, that we need a solution for local government as well. The educators are upset, because part of the funding proposal is to have educators help pay into the PERS piece, which comes out of salary, so, yeah.
Seven and a half percent salary.
Two, I think it was two, it was like a sliding scale, and it went like from 1.5 up to three, if I recall, over a certain period of time.
Oh, there's a dash, oh.
Oh, go ahead. So, just so you know, I don't, if you want to learn more about that, I can send you some more information, but...
We didn't do anything, did we, Lisa, with the 2209, the one about the oil trains?
No, you know, I, I had a contact in the, is it showing it still being alive?
I can look, hold on.
I had a contact on the day we went to the Capitol in Kotex's office, and I've emailed her twice, and she's not responding to my emails, so I'm like...
2209, you said?
Mm-hmm. That was just the...
Uh...
For the oil trains, requiring them to do the, there were a couple of different bills.
No, it's good. It's, it's all alive. Yeah, it moved, it's been amended, uh, yeah.
I guess I just don't see anything coming up.
Um, if it's, yeah, 2209A, so it's an A in gross diversion.
Oh, okay.
And it had a work session on April 2nd, and has been referred to Ways and Means. So I don't know what it costs. So I, I don't know enough to know if that Ways and Means referral is a death sentence or not, or if it's actually keeping it going. Because I don't know what the, I don't know what the fiscal is.
Does that mean, well, because what, what Kotex staffer told me was that the big debate was, the railroads didn't want to pay for the cost of doing these study, these contingency planning, and they wanted DEQ to pay. So does the fact that they referred it to Ways and Means mean...
It's going to DEQ.
It's going to DEQ to pay? Because she sounded pretty adamant that they were going to, you know, resist that.
Uh, it could. The fiscal is up. I actually just pulled it up. And it does look like it's moving money to DEQ. So about a total of, well, to DEQ and the Fire Marshal. And then it has the collection costs built in. So yeah, that's what it looks like. But they, I mean, that's why it's at Ways and Means, because it's an actual fiscal impact to the state of Oregon, and they're going to now talk about it.
So they're not going to charge the railroads anything?
It's not clear, it sounds like. I am reading this so fast. The measure establishes an annual fee of .05 of gross operating revenues of railroads that are required to submit a contingency plan. So it looks like there's a fee levied on the railroads. So there's a revenue impact that's showing that you get 1.2 million between 19, 2019 and 2025, so you are bringing in money. And then it's showing what the expenditures out are to DEQ and the Fire Marshal, at 803 to DEQ and 462 to Fire Marshal. So to me, it looks like they're showing you how they get the money and how they spend the money.
Got it.
But I also just read that just now.
Thank you for being literate.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's my one, it's my one remaining skill.
She knows her way around OLS way better than I do.
Counsel, just so you know, we also have 15 minutes until we have to end the meeting, because we didn't have a hearing tonight.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Have fun at C4 in the morning, let me know how it goes.
Yeah, you're not coming?
No.
Good answer.
All righty then. So council announcements, yes, we're there. Join us this Thursday, April 18th, at 6:00 PM for the Comprehensive Plan Housing Town Hall at the Portland Waldorf School. This important discussion will include housing goals, needs, and priorities for the next 20 years. Childcare, simultaneous Spanish translation, and refreshments will be provided. RSVP to plan@milwaukeeoregon.gov and indicate if childcare is needed. Join the Milwaukee Pioneer Cemetery for a spring cleanup on Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Visit the city's homepage for a link to register, to volunteer. NCPRD will be seeing, is seeing volun... That is a weird use of that verb. NCPRD is seeing volunteers to help...
Seeking.
Seeking, thank you.
That makes more sense.
It makes a lot more sense. NCPRD is seeking volunteers to help with a Minthorne Wetlands cleanup on Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Tools, gloves, and... Tools, gloves, and refreshments are provided. For more information, contact Matt Jordan at mjordan@ncprd.com or call 971-313-2031. Join the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, the city, the Linwood Neighborhood District Association, and hundreds of community members to celebrate the grand opening of Wichita Park on Saturday, April 20th from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. The event includes Earth Day booths, crafts, rec mobile activities, live music, free barbecue prepared by the Linwood Neighborhood District Association, and a ribbon cutting at 12:45. Wichita Park is located at Southeast Monroe Street and Southeast 59th Avenue. After attending the Wichita Park Grand Opening, you are invited to explore downtown Milwaukee at the annual Downtown Bunny Hop on Saturday, April 20th from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, sponsored by the Downtown Milwaukee Business Association. Children are encouraged to bring a basket, dress in your favorite outfit, and visit each of the participating downtown businesses for a treat. The city is sponsoring a Climate Action Week, beginning on Monday, April 22nd through Friday, April 26th, in celebration of Earth Day. The week will focus on a different action that you can take each day. Learn more on the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov or follow the city on Facebook each day. The North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, in partnership with the city, have updated the design to complete Milwaukee Bay Park and invite you to attend an open house and design presentation on Wednesday, April 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, to learn about the design and have conversations about key aspects of the project. Light refreshments and children's coloring table will be available. Dispose of unused medications and have your confidential documents shredded on Saturday, April 27th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Milwaukee Public Safety Building. This free event is brought to you by the Milwaukee Police Department and the Milwaukee Public Safety Foundation. Lastly, the Letting Library, the Letting Seed Swap will take place on Saturday, April 27th from 10:00 AM to 5:30 PM at the Letting Library. Bring seeds to offer at the swap and select some new ones to take home with you. For more information about each of the events mentioned, please visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. Thank you for not making me say that on every single thing.
So, because our May meeting isn't until the 7th, before our next meeting, I mean, our first meeting in May isn't until the 7th, we have both the beginning of First Friday on May 3rd and the farmer's market on May 5th. So, those things are coming back. I think it's the 10th year for First Friday and it's the 21st year for the farmer's market. And so, we have that to look forward to. I love it when May rolls around. And I would just also mention the Minthorne Wetlands Work Party, along with NCPRD, actually the Milwaukee Parks Foundation is a cosponsor of that event. And one of our board members got, managed to finagle some donation of food from, of baked, baked goods from New Seasons, so we're going to, there's treats there for people who want to come help us clean up the wetland, which will be both trash pickup and invasive species removal. Yeah.
There's a lot of that there.
There's a lot of that there.
Mayor, I also missed an opportunity to speak to a constituent concern at the start of the meeting, so I just wanted to disclose, we had a gentleman come in and ask about parking at Milwaukee Bay Park a couple of weeks ago. We have nine stalls that are for non-trailer use. There are six up by Kellogg, and then there are three, I'm sorry, Kellogg Treatment Plant. Those are close to the building, but in the center island space. And then, there are three spaces that are down closer to the park near the, near the traditional parking for trailers. All those are signed, so please, if you are confused, please look for the sign that says it's for Milwaukee Bay Park.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Just a second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.